Yeah, we called our February 25th meeting of Dayton City Council standing for the pledge. You need a motion and a second, agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Get your discussion?
Um, can I ask a question? Or that, that's the after, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did anybody want to adjust anything? I thought we had.
What was I thinking?
There was, uh, there is one adjustment. I forgot to print it off, I apologize. Payment of claims, um, the front cover page I sent off to you guys in an email just for the meeting. It was from the previous meeting and I apologize that I didn't get it adjusted out, but I did send it out to you. I will print it out.
There was nothing else. I thought there was something else.
That was the only thing that was.
Okay.
That was needs to be corrected, so. That will be corrected for the packets also.
Okay, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Okay, agenda is approved. Now we get on to the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Um, I have a question. I also had a question. You can go first, sir. I'm scrolling, sorry. My question was on C, the approval to change order four for wellhouse five. Just what was, why did we switch from natural gas generator to a diesel generator? Why did that happen?
Uh, Center Point Energy, after we had designed and bid the project, announced that for, hopefully I'm getting this right, for large demand, non-continuous use, so basically standby services, would have to pay large tariffs to exist.
Oh, okay.
Um, just as a reserve, so, and it was, it was pretty substantial.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And the use this thing's gonna get is gonna be almost nothing, right? And it's gonna be, the use this thing's gonna get?
Hopefully never.
Yeah. It's, it's not used during any of the staging, it's just when?
No, I mean, it's, it's run just to maintain operability, but, um, yeah, it's not used in any normal circumstances.
Thank you for that clarification. Anything else? That's it for me.
I have a question. There is some EMS supplies for the EMR refresher training. Are we bringing that in-house or do we normally purchase the supplies for the refresher?
Mayor and Councilman Henderson, so, we are bringing in, um, the EMR training in-house. So we have, um, prepping for that. I have a meeting with Dr. Tangy this week on Thursday. Um, but that's all been approved by him already, so yes, we're bringing some of those supplies in, so that can be done in-house.
You mentioned, I'm sorry, what was the name again?
For Dr. Tangy.
Oh, okay.
He's our medical director.
Yes. And he's teaching the course?
No. We have people within the organization that can teach the course.
Is that, so it goes through him, that's not accredited through the college, right? That's just through him?
No, we have to get authorized through the EMS R B, Emergency Services Regulatory Board.
Okay. I have another question for you. Um, there is a State of Minnesota OEMS on page thirty. Can you tell us more about what that is? It says Instructor Barthel, F D instructor, it's a hundred dollars.
Uh, it's just a hundred?
Mm-hmm.
I'd have to get back to you and check on that. I don't know exactly off the top of my head without looking at it. Is it a Visa charge or is it a check charge?
Doesn't say, where would I find that?
Yeah. Chief, I think it's just a check charge to the State of Minnesota OEMS. I don't know what that stands for.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, so that a hundred dollar charge is to, it's not a check to Payton? It's a check to the EMS R B so that we can move forward with the, uh, internal EMR training.
Okay. That's all, yeah.
David, can I?
Um, I do A M D around, uh, wellhead treatment plant change order three. Looks like, to me, we just reopen the whole contract and everybody can put new numbers on it. But one of the things more specifically that I wanted to ask about, it, it seems to include, um, remobilizing charges? And I thought we had already approved that in change order two.
There was a two thousand five hundred remobilization charge for the electrician, I believe, on there?
That was one of them, yeah.
And that was omitted from the original, uh, remobilizing, uh, charge that we paid of. I think we paid fifty thousand for, um, remobbing and demobbing to Magni. This is for their subcontractor.
So that didn't cover anybody else's?
I think it did some, but they, this one didn't come, the two thousand five hundred for the electrician didn't, didn't go on to that one, they missed it.
Okay.
You good?
No, I'm not good, but.
I know, I was, so, it, it looked like it was two fifty K, but it was only a hundred and seventy to the, um, that we'd have to fund. Does that mean eighty? Eight into the reserves, or what, where did? Those numbers didn't add up for me. And I guess, I'm just wondering, what reserves do we have left?
Um, there's a, I tried to put something in the staff report about that.
You might have.
I think, and I'm guessing, I think it's, um, hundred and fifty thousand, something like that. Of course.
Yeah, one hundred and forty eight thousand nine hundred left, contingency dollars.
Yeah.
Scott, you got it?
Good.
Okay.
We'll get there. Hopefully.
All right. Uh, any more comments on consent? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Curious, five to zero. On to open forum. Open forum limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. State your name and address, no council action will be taken, items will be referred back to staff. Anybody here for open forum? I thought you'd print up your own.
Hi, I'm Keith Grover. I live at one hundred and thirteenth in Fernbrook and, and what I would want to, uh, to talk to you guys about tonight is the, is traffic issues on one twenty-one. Um, we had another accident at one hundred and thirteenth in Fernbrook again this morning. Garbage truck going to the commercial golf course back there, was making a left turn, had to wait because of the excessive traffic going southbound on Fernbrook this morning. The first vehicle behind the garbage truck was paying attention apparently and they stopped, but the vehicle behind them apparently did not and slammed into them and both vehicles ended up going away on a, on a flatbed on the hook. Looked to me like they were probably both totaled, but, again, I'm no expert on that. Luckily, no one was hurt. There was a young lady with a couple little kids in the backseat of the car that got ran into and they all appeared to be okay, which was just great. Happened, when it happens, right outside your door and right at the end of your driveway, it kind of gets your attention, you know? It's, it's really a scary thing. I'm not sure what we can do about one hundred and thirteenth and Fernbrook because we all, I guess we all know that that's going away, right? Uh, in the near future. So that'll be an issue that, as long as we don't allow left turns there in the near future, you know, judging from, you know, the rearrangement of the roads that you guys have been talking about, I guess that would be a non-issue. I would keep that in mind when all that is going on, that, um, that that left turn onto one hundred and thirteenth, uh, from northbound Fernbrook or one twenty-one, um, either needs to go away completely or something really needs to change with that intersection, so that's the first thing. The other thing I would like to talk about is the intersection, excuse me, down at Rush Creek Parkway in Fernbrook or Elm Creek Road in Fernbrook, depending on which side of the, of the road you're on. That whole intersection down there is a bloody nightmare. And one of the things, besides the design of it, uh, one of the things that really makes it dangerous is that when you're coming off from Rush Creek Parkway and you're coming on to go north or south on Fernbrook Lane, we have three lanes on Rush Creek Parkway, eastbound, when you get to that intersection. It splits into a, a right, theoretically a right turn lane and a left turn lane, but there's no markings on which lane you need to be in to go straight across onto Elm Creek Road. And I've had this happen to me many times. You pull up there, I know to be in the left lane, which theoretically would be the, the same lane you'd turn to go north on Fernbrook on, to go straight across on Elm Creek Road, because that's the lane that lines up with Elm Creek Road. People constantly pull into the right-hand lane or the right turn lane to go south on, on Fernbrook and they will go across the intersection the same time that you do. Halfway into the middle of the intersection, they get over the crown, they go, oh crap, there's no road in front of me, and then you got two cars trying to slam into one lane. Um, I've talked to, to staff about that, um, last fall. I know my son-in-law, uh, talked to staff about that a couple of months before I did, about us getting proper lane markings on it, so at least people would know that there was one lane that went straight across and one lane that turned right and the one that went straight across would also be the left turn lane to go north on, on Fernbrook Lane. But it's, it's still not fixed. The one we did fix, and that's what we need to do to this intersection, is what's on one hundred and seventeenth and Fernbrook. All those lane markings there are the right lane markings. We need to take those and duplicate them on Rush Creek Parkway in Fernbrook to make that a more safer intersection. I don't know if we can ever make it safe because of the, the design, but we need to do that. And however, you know, whatever needs to be done to make that happen, I guess would be a huge step in the right direction. The other thing they want to quickly mention is the speed and the traffic load on Fernbrook Lane. You know, you've all driven it, you all know what it's like. It's very scary to live on that road, especially having grown up out there and seen what it's like now, it's really scary. But there are, I believe, sixty-one exits and accesses, or maybe one of the right terms, driveways, side streets, to get onto one twenty-one from the southern border of Dayton, by just south of Rush Creek Parkway, to Pine View. There are sixty-one different places for people to pull out of or turn onto, between that short, I guess, what is it, like two mile stretch, or maybe it's a two and a quarter mile stretch? And in that whole stretch, most of the road is marked with double line, no passing, and that's because there's no sidelines. You're going up and down or over hills, and there's only, there's only one stretch along that whole road where it's actually even safe to pass, and then I don't think it's safe to pass there because you've got so many houses. There's a whole housing project along there, north of one hundred and seventeenth. There's probably twenty-five driveways all within that same stretch where they let them pass, so that, you know, anything we can do to, you know, to help alleviate that, I'd hate to see somebody get hurt bad out there. I've seen so many close calls. This intersection at Rush Creek that I was just talking about, when you're on Elm Creek and you want to go south on Fernbrook, they've got that concrete island, the center, that they put at that intersection. Well, it does have a sign on there that kind of gives that little knob to, you know, to go to the right to the sign. When you're sitting on Elm Creek Road to make that left turn, that's like right out here. People go out onto the highway to go south on Fernbrook, they don't see that sign. They head south on Fernbrook and they're in the left-hand turn lane for the northbound traffic. That happens so many times. My God, I was in a car with a friend one time, he was bringing me home, we're coming down that road and I saw the car sitting on Elm Creek Road. We were chatting, right? And that, and, and there was plenty of room for that car to pull out, so it wasn't an issue for us. But that person pulled out and they went southbound and they went right by us in the northbound lane. And that all happened so fast, he didn't even realize it until it went by and we're both like, oh my God, that person was on the wrong side of the road. So I, I don't know if we can get with the county to fix that, put, you know, a lot of times they'll have signs up there, do not enter, when you enter, you know, a road like that that's going the wrong way, like they do on the freeways. But those are the things that are kind of important to me and I thought I would bring them to your attention, so anything that you guys can do, you know, to help fix that before somebody?
Dies.
Dies, exactly, just to be one.
Yeah.
Keith, of all, of all times you picked tonight to come, this was perfect, because the guy that's gonna fix all this is right behind you.
Right. And my vote for him depends on that, too.
Thanks, Keith.
Anybody else for open forum? Anybody online?
So if you wanted to speak in open forum, if you can use the raise your hand function.
All right, we'll move on to staff consult council updates.
Yep, Mayor Council, couple of things for you tonight, City Day on the Hill is next Thursday. Myself and Councilor Fashion will be attending that event. If anyone else wants to join, please let me know so I can sign up. Scott? Okay. If anyone else wants to join, let me know. I have scheduled meetings with both of our representatives and the Senator as well, so, again, let me know if you want to go, that's next Thursday. And wellhead treatment plant with approval of the change order tonight is slated to begin here in April, or hopefully end of May, maybe, depending on weather. So let's just cross our fingers for the best weather possible, so that it's completed on time and date, which is January of twenty twenty-six.
Amy? Marty?
Uh, just one thing, uh, update on well for rehab. The equipment is finally in place. They need to put in another twenty-five feet of, of pipe, um, to allow them to do their grout in. They will be doing grout in Wednesday and Thursday of this week. Um, it'll take two weeks to cure in the hole. The drill rig, uh, the crane will be removed, a drill rig will be drilled, uh, brought in, um, to drill out the residual grout in the well, and then sand will be removed and the well will be test pumped to make sure there's no sand in the remaining water. What in the water that's remaining?
Yeah, hopefully there's.
Yeah.
So are we dying one minute March when it's back online?
Um, I'm not, uh, we should be, I'm trying to get it done by end of March at the latest, because then that will keep us out the way of Magni remobbing onto the wellhead treatment plant site.
Cool. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This Friday, Zach will be sending out some information from Echo Data, our third-party contractor that we utilize for, um, data analytics for fire calls and response times. Um, I have a dashboard set up for council to view, but what I'm looking for is your feedback on what you would like on it. Currently, it's set up for response times, so the median would be the fifty percentile, and then the number of calls based on either EMS and, um, fire calls. Um, it does look a little messy at the moment, but I'm trying to really understand what you are looking for, for that data, so. You have an opportunity to look at it at your leisure and log in, we're looking to get you a login to that as well, so if you provide information back to Zach, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Nope. Nothing? James, Mary? Amy?
No report from me.
Nope. Nope. I got nothing?
No. Nothing for me.
I have nothing.
All right, on to presentations. Hot seat.
All right, Keith, pay attention.
Let's take a nap.
We're giving contact information. Thank you so much for, uh, for giving me the opportunity to come and provide an update from Hennepin County. Uh, I'm Kevin Anderson. I think there is, yeah, there is some information, it should be in your packets, you can look at it. I don't need to remind you of everything that, uh, about me. I wanted to provide some updates. Last year, we came, uh, my updates to the cities largely focused on, um, different ways that the county provided services to residents of Dayton. Um, this year, I wanted to provide a slightly different kind of update, uh, in other opportunities that Hennepin County can partner with Dayton to try to make sure that, uh, we're achieving mutual goals. Um, we can continue on. Before I do that, I did want to, uh, quickly address, there are some projects that are happening in Dayton and being planned in Dayton. Uh, road projects, as the Chair of Public Works, I still try to keep a very close eye on this. I really appreciate the comments and hearing from residents about different safety concerns. All of those safety concerns go to our staff, uh, who evaluate, uh, different road conditions and try to make sure that any opportunities for safety improvements get put into our operational plans. Uh, so every opportunity that we have to hear from residents, uh, is incredibly valuable, so I really appreciate hearing that. And anytime that you hear from it, please send it my way or send it to our Public Works, uh, staff, uh, so that they can hear about what, uh, what concerns are happening. We have twenty-two hundred lane miles of, of roadway in Hennepin County, uh, and so monitoring each and every one of those across forty-five cities, as you can imagine, uh, can be a bit much. That's why our partnerships with cities is so important, to make sure that we know what's happening in your community. So here are a few things. I know the pavement rehabilitation on Brockton has actually been rescheduled for, uh, twenty twenty-seven, uh, but, uh, we are still, it's still in our, uh, in our C I P and we're going to be doing that work. Um, I know that there is a number of other projects happening, kind of adjacent, and some realignment that's happening, uh, both from Maple Grove and in Champlin that are going to be impacting, uh, traffic flow. And so we're going to keep a, a close eye on all of the, the work happening, both in the community and the surrounding community, to try to make sure that we can address as many needs as we can. Moving on.
So this, that, that twenty twenty-seven Brockton is that, that's not a, a full rebuild, that's just like a mill and overlay, what are you doing there?
I think that is just rehabilitation, it's not a complete reconstruct.
Okay.
So. Um, but I can make sure that we get the, the details on that project and send to you.
Yeah, I can confirm that was just a mill and overlay project.
Okay, thank you. One of the things that I wanted to, uh, to touch on, a big way that the county shows up and partners with cities, and we really need cities to partner with the, the county in order to do some of the work that we do, is through housing. We have a lot of investment that the county makes in affordable housing and accessible housing to try to make sure that residents, uh, are able to afford to live in the communities that they, uh, that they work in, that they grew up in. And we know that, uh, housing costs are just going through the roof. It's really hard to build. Builders are, are struggling, uh, cities are struggling to make sure that, uh, many cities are struggling to try to make sure that, uh, housing that is accessible to everybody is available in their communities. So one of the ways that we've tried to do this is partnering with cities to provide grants, uh, cities and developers. Now, one of the things that we try to look at and trying to prioritize, uh, how we determine these, this work, is through, um, our disparities reduction. So a number of households in, in Hennepin County, about a third of the households are housing burdened, which means that over, uh, thirty percent of their income is going to their housing, uh, housing costs. They are, if the more, uh, of their income that goes to housing, obviously the less they have for food, uh, for groceries, for gas, for all of the other things that we need to survive and thrive. Um, so the more we can do to try to alleviate housing costs, the bigger impact we can have on total well-being. So we try to, uh, partner and play a role in either subsidizing, uh, individual living units or the building of, uh, of, uh, housing in general in, in a community. So we have a number of housing bonds that we, that we authorize. Uh, we do a lot of pass-through funding through HUD. We'll see if that is able to continue. We don't necessarily know, uh, how much is going to be available to us in the future, uh, but what we have, we try to make sure that we get, uh, keep flowing into the communities. We know that, uh, our priorities in the housing continuum, it's not just one area. We try to make sure that we are addressing people who are currently experiencing homelessness, all the way through affordable homeownership. Um, we want to make sure that we are addressing, uh, every level of, uh, a person's experience in Hennepin County, because we know it's not a one-size-fits-all approach, it can't be. Thank you. Um, we do have a number of RFPs that, uh, open yearly, uh, for cities. I know one of the, the RFPs has already closed, it'll be open up and again in December. Um, so as you're evaluating or looking forward in the next year of, uh, potential opportunities, uh, feel free to reach out to my office or county staff to, uh, to explore what other opportunities might exist for your community, um, as you're going through planning phases. I think this is going to be really important, especially as, uh, cities are starting to look, really dive into their comprehensive planning process, uh, and finding ways that the county can be a, a partner in that planning process. We do, uh, a number of, um, other work, uh, in the local affordable housing aid. I think we can, uh, I'll let you look through some of the, uh, the, the dense numbers. But in addition to housing, we also have a number of other, uh, grants and funds available, uh, through, uh, good stewardship grants, which is, um, recycling grants, uh, tree, um, planting grants, forestry work. Uh, we have a number of, uh, of these opportunities that are funded through different sources, whether it's through tipping fees, um, and we try to make sure that those are available and accessible either to cities or, uh, organizations within your community. We can continue on. Before I, uh, open it up for questions, I did also just want to say, uh, this last year, we did, um, kind of as it relates to housing, uh, we took over the assessing, uh, services for cities and, uh, took on that, uh, that cost, you know, in its entirety, uh, mainly because we saw it as an opportunity to, like, really kind of streamline process. Uh, it didn't make a whole lot of sense, you were already contracting with us, they were already our employees. Why keep on shifting money back and forth? Uh, the administrative savings is, is worth it to us to try to make sure that that's, uh, that we're able to provide that value to your community. Uh, so we were happy to make that change and hopefully that was, uh, a help to you in the, in the budgeting process for this year. And we look forward to finding other ways that we can partner with and, uh, support Payton in the future.
Do you see that change, um, continuing?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, in fact, there's only, um, there's nine cities right now that are not part of that, uh, the larger, larger communities, excluding Plymouth. larger communities, excluding Plymouth. Plymouth is, was a part of it. And we don't have any intention of charging you again with it. So we were providing those services, and we'll continue to provide them.
So in your long-term plan, that was, that was the bulk of it, right? Does that go into five years, or that, those?
The, the CIP?
Yeah.
Yep, that's, so we have a five-year capital improvement plan. So it is possible to get some, some projects in within that five-year plan, but it is worth saying, like, the sooner you can tell us what your plans are, the, the more, the easier it is for us to, like, work alongside you and get them into our long-term planning.
I just, I'm just thinking, Keith brought it up, but I just think this rush, rush crate thing is going to explode.
Yeah.
There's so much traffic in the morning and evenings.
And I will say, one of the things that is particularly challenging for, for the county, and not just Dayton, but growing communities in general, is we don't have land use decision-making. So we don't get to decide what kind of new housing developments are coming in. And, like, we are kind of the recipient of, of those decisions. And so as you're making a lot of those decisions, and some of it isn't you, right? There's new developments happening in Rogers, that traffic flows through, right? It's happening in Sherburne County, it's happening in Wright County, and we have to respond to it. And, you know, the reality is that there's not enough transportation funding dollars to make all the changes as quickly as we would like them to, which is why we're continually advocating at the state and federal level to, to find more funding sources for that. So. And of course, any, any partnership with the cities is always appreciated.
Any questions? No, I think we, I don't know if you've seen the whole agenda, but if you've got the opportunity to stick around for the next couple items, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I can stick around for a little bit, yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate seeing you all at community events, and I will continue to have my coffees with Kevin, and invite you all to attend as you're able. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to Care Resource Connections. Amy?
Hello, Mayor and Council. So I'm Amy with Care Resource Connection. We were here last year to start talking about the pilot with the fire department on the Community Health Program. I wanted to just share with the council the, the body of work that we've done with this program. This is part of the training that I do with the fire departments, and I wanted to share this slide, because it's really important for folks to understand why this, why now, why you. Obviously, we'll go through here, talking about the 911 calls and the community 911 story that we found while doing this work, and how now is the time to create that community risk reduction plan with the city. And then how all firefighters, they want to help. They're here to serve their community. And in the community health lane that we're working with legislation on, that'll work alongside public health, excuse me, we want to bring those firefighter voices up to the table, and let them know that we're listening to them. We're listening to what each city is saying, what each story is telling us with the 911 call data, which is allowing us to move some more community partnerships and state, local, county partnerships as we build through this. We've all been talking about how the dreaded 2030, the senior tsunami is going to come, and I'm here to tell you it's over here, if you didn't already know. And we are here in Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa, and Wisconsin. So what we started here in the city of St. Louis Park has blossomed into other states, where I'm now a tactical team lead for MDH and DHS on our 10-year blueprint on aging, which the city of Dayton is, the fire department is now part of as well, because we talked about this pilot, and how each of these communities are going to help us update our state emergency plan, because it hasn't been updated since 2015. And it's up to all of us to work with state fire marshal, homeland security, to make sure that we're able to have a senior emergency preparedness plan, because as we are all learning, and I'll talk a little bit more about it, the 911 calls are more complex that the, the fire departments are dealing with. And now with this program, we've been able to provide them with the tools of how to do that, and how to navigate the community resources. But when we're talking about the complexity in our seniors in our community, we also have to look at how, and I'll share a couple of stories that we're, to examine this a little bit deeper, but sometimes, no matter how hard we try, seniors don't have a place to go, whether it's a TCU bed, or nursing home bed, and they're forced to age in places. It's even worse in rural. But we're seeing this here, in the city of Dayton, and that's really why we want to talk about the importance of this program, and what the response we've received back from your community. Excellent. So again, what's your city's story? The 911 calls really fill the pages, right? These are real cases that the fire department has gone out, and I think the biggest thing that I want all of you to understand, when it comes to this program, is the fire departments cannot change the dispatch reason. That just stays. It gets reported to the state fire marshal, and that's how that goes. So if they're being called in for a lift assist, many times, you're going to come into something much more different than a lift assist, right? And so in these examples, we've responded, they've responded to a lift assist. It wasn't told to them that the gentleman was lying on the ground in freezing temperatures outside, right? So there's some work we have to do with Hennepin County Dispatch, that's on a larger level, but these types of programs and these types of cases telling the story allows them to have this, this information to teach and share as well. You know, we've had illness calls, where they have PCA people in the home to help out, right? And they don't know what to do, so they're calling 911, because the, the PCA that's provided from the county is in there helping them, maybe with just normal, you know, day-to-day tasks, but now all of a sudden, they're having a medical event, and that PCA is not certified or trained to, to deal with that. So it, it goes back to 911. And then that's where we go back to the county and say, here's the case, here's the story, we need to add some additional services. And that 911 call referral becomes that story that allows the, the county social worker to add more services around it. Difficulty breathing, right? So we see those come on, and that could just be, we've seen several of these, actually. We'll talk about more when I show you the data. But this just, our folks that, this is their only access to healthcare, is by calling 911. And there, there are several stories here in this community where 911 is these folks' only access to healthcare. Illness, again, you know, responding to someone who has a terminal illness and having a stroke, right? The spouses, so they have complex issues as well. They used to be each other's caregivers, now they're both declining. They don't want to leave their home in Dayton. They don't want to leave everything they've worked for, and there's a great fear of asking for help. And so this program allows us, in this community risk reduction response, to meet them where they are, look and see how we can help them age in place, reach out into all of our community resources, be it the county, be it the state, be it Age Friendly, AARP, and talk to their doctors, and really help them self-advocate for themselves, on how they can remain safe in place. The falls, we hear a lot about it. This is really where my heart and soul is with falls and lift assists, because a fall in the home, and the person's saying, I'm okay, there's a 90% chance that there's going to be another fall. And we want to prevent those, those types of things, because a second fall could prevent it, and we could have a serious injury. So the person could be falling, they're needing complex care, but they're scared, because they already gone to the hospital, and they were told that I'm sitting in a wheelchair in the ED for six hours, and I can't wait that long. I came here by myself, I'm scared. So they want to go home. And then we're having that, that cycle again, right? So the dizzy, the faint, the dizzy and fainting, the hearts, you know, many times are responding to a caller or, and/or their spouse, again, that are unable to advocate for themselves. They just don't know what they don't know. The idea of Care Resource Connection, when I originally started, was because I came from North Memorial, I helped create the Community Paramedic Program in the state with Dr. Wilcox. And so community health has always been my passion. But the, the days of having that trusted care team, having that trusted doctor, doctors are retiring. New doctors are coming in, and they're not taking complex patients. And this is a reality. And even when we go further out into Alexandria, and up to Moorhead, and oh, crossover to West Fargo, 70% of these, of the rural population does not have a care, a primary care doctor. They may say, I go to this clinic, and a doctor will see me, or they're filling up the EDs, because that's their only access to get some help. And the pain calls, you know, pain is another one that I look at as, it's kind of like an onion, there's something deeper there. Pain is like an additional vital sign that we have to really look at differently. And a lot of folks that are calling for pain in your community are also including our veterans. And so there is a trust level there. There's a trust level of, of going to the VA, and the VA's way out in Minneapolis, and what if I go out there? And I don't want to go to an old soldier's home. You know, they may go to the Ramsey Clinic, and we partner with the Ramsey Clinic, and I work really closely with Senator Abler, that has the Haven for Heroes in Anoka. And so we always, if we have a veteran that's homeless, we try really hard to get them into those spaces. But it's just another piece of, the VA's so complex, right? We had a veteran call the other day. Ramsey PD called and asked for some help, and I, I had called, and they had a family member here in Dayton. And so I was able to kind of do a two-for-one, and bring both of them over to the Ramsey Clinic, and coordinate some of their care, because a lot of it is done out in Minneapolis. But they don't know that there's certain things they can do with the fire and the police reports telling the story. It shows like they went to the ED. So same again, we find a lot, a lot of illness calls, where home care nurses are in there, and Gary and the crews respond, and the home care nurse is calling me, Amy, I'm dealing with this patient, and they need more resources, more than we can give, be it Alina, be it Fairview, be it all the big ones and small. They have all called, because they're not built to connect to the community. We're all working in silos. And so this program has allowed us to break those silos and work across their, for their care plan. So same again, when our family member's out of town, you know, you, there were a few people here that came to Dayton from out of state to care for their loved ones on hospice, because they lived alone. But they didn't know what they didn't know about hospice, and, you know, we were able to come in and, and help them coordinate some of those additional cares, because once you're in palliative care and hospice, the, you know, the opportunities are available to you more than they were for traditional home care. And then same with, on the bottom, I really wanted to add these, because I talk about our elderly, I talk about our veterans, I talk about those with chronic disease. We have a lot of kiddos, we have a lot of pediatric calls here, and a lot of parents that are looking for some additional education on how to help their kids deal with their chronic diseases, how to deal with seizures, how to deal with allergic reactions, and they just don't know what they don't know. And it costs a lot to go to an allergist and to a specialist, and you could go and bring your child and have all these people talk about what a great plan of care is, but it costs money and time and energy to go and do all of these things, and people are working and scheduling, and specialty clinics don't have urgent cares, right? So it's left on to the ED and the urgent care folks. And we also are seeing some calls here, where we are having an issue with alcoholism and mental health and things of that nature, and where are those resources coming from? And how are we able to connect these folks, all ages, into these types of spaces? We've, that's really where, when we're talking about, I'm, I'm not sure if you're aware, I was in Albert Lee this morning, doing the same thing with the mayor and the council. But there is going to be coming out a new response, and I didn't put this on the slide, I just learned of this this morning, that for EMS and fire, there's going to be new OSHA requirements, that it's going to be required for cities to have a community risk reduction plan. I always love it when I hear we're five years ahead of things, but the work that we put into this pilot is going to help this city and the fire, police department and EMS do, you know, use this as that starting point. Next one? Okay, here we go. Ready? So all, this is 2024 data, okay? So this is a breakdown of the types of calls for the city of Dayton, and what your 911 Dayton story looks like. You'll be seeing some different things. Grant with Echo is also, works with us at Care Resource Connection, so you'll be seeing additional layers of this information. So this might help you when you're getting that information back to Zach and Gary. But again, the, the largest one is pain. Remember I told you, pain is always telling us a different story? So we have a lot of that. We have a lot of breathing problems, a lot. When I see a breathing problem, it's really, when we get into the, these spaces, it's, it's not only because, you know, they're, they're struggling in the moment. This has been going on for a long period of time, right? COPD, asthma, allergies, certain different things like that. Heart, you have a lot of hearts here in, in the city of Dayton's, and falls right next to it. So when everyone asks, if anyone asks you, what's your top fives? You have your pain, breathing, heart, falls, and illness. And illness, like I said, could be anything once they get there. It's kind of, depending on what they're able to say to dispatch, may be different. So just looking at the first part of that graph, and put your mind into a position of, I'm a firefighter, and I'm responding to this type of call, your mind is geared going into this type of call, okay, this person is in pain, this person is having breathing problems. And like I just shared on the one earlier, they're walking in, almost to a community member, looking at kind of being their care coordinator, help me, I don't know what I don't know, right? Should I go to the hospital? What should I do? And it's a lot of pressure to put on a firefighter. And that's why these, these programs are so important, to highlight where some of the education, some of the training should be, and how we can look at this, have deeper conversations with Kevin Anderson, and, you know, with the county, and have different conversations with, like, AARP, Senior Linkage Line, how can we make sure that the access is equitable for everyone? You know, in this pilot, we do not charge any of the citizens for any of the work that we do. Prior to me coming here, there was a call that was, we've been dealing with a resident, back and forth with their care team, started with the home care nurse, ended up going to the hospital, having different issues, and she has been back and forth, the last four days, back and forth to the hospital, because the social worker is unable to find her a TCU bed. I was late coming in today, because I called every single TCU partner I have in the metro, and I found her one. So after this, I will be going to her home, I will be calling 911, and we will be getting her to the hospital, and she will go into a TCU where she can be safe. I will, you know, those things are, we, we do behind the scenes, not to this amount. I'm always after 911. I'm not normally coming in when this is happening, but four times, being turned and burned in the ED is not okay. And so again, based off of those number of calls, these are the referrals that we were given. So I know last year, Kevin was here, and I was here doing this conversation about, you know, what's happening with, with the community, and 20% of the community at that time was on county services. And these, these slices here are the repeat calls. These are the referrals that they sent over to us. So about 20% of those calls, we serviced, and we were able to connect these folks for help. The bigger picture there, that 66%, are those repeat calls that I did not get referrals to. Because again, it's a pilot, we had training, we had different things we had to do, but there should have been another 30% after I reviewed all the data, that could have turned into an appropriate referral for these folks, to reduce that repeat call.
Who decides on a referral?
The page, the caller, right? So when they go on in, the part of the program is, you know, we're here, we're responding, we have this program with the city of Dayton and the fire department. Are you open and willing to accept help? We can provide your information to this person and they say yes, and that's how we move forward. Um, but really, you know, community health is not public health. It's separate. We work both in tandem. Um, but it creates this unique programs based on the city's, you know, community health assessments. We come in and we do a deeper dive because I want to understand the story. I want to understand where the gaps are. I know you have Hennepin County embedded social workers here, which is wonderful. Um, but we have, you know, some gas stations. We have the community center. But I think we, as we're talking about comprehensive planning, really looking at where there's some other resource hubs and, and points of places where people can go, you know, maybe walk or, or just have it within their own community. Um, and so we bridge those gaps and that's where I talk about how, you know, it's important for us to work together to create each city's specific story. Cause your story is different from St. Louis Park and from Moorhead in North Dakota. Um, but your story is what I share with the elected officials, our county commissioner, MDH, DHS, um, on this ten-year blueprint on aging. Um, because we want to be able to work with these programs. And just as you guys have to work on your budgets, you know, we go to the, the state and our elected officials and say, there's a lot of community-based organizations. There's a lot of good people doing good work. And everyone has a space, but we don't want to ever duplicate the work. We want to make sure that these resources are used appropriately and is coming back into the community. Um, and that's where we take all of our, um, data and we have those conversations with, uh, state and, uh, elected officials. What questions do you have?
I have a couple. That's okay.
Yeah.
Um, so we did a pilot last year. When did the pilot start?
The pilots officially was, well, it started, we signed the contract in July. Um, but we started prepping for the contract in like May, I would say.
We didn't refer anyone until after July?
Correct.
Okay. Um, can you go back to the slide that has that, that sixty, yes, this one? So these are repeat calls.
Correct. Three or more.
Three or more.
Mm-hmm.
And in that sixty-six percent, you said, how many of those do you believe should have been referred to you?
Thirty-four percent more.
Thirty-four percent more should have been referred.
Yeah, three or more calls.
Can you quantify the number of calls we're talking about here? Cause we can talk about percentages.
Oh, yeah. Three hundred and forty-seven.
So of three hundred and forty-seven, thirty-three percent more should have been referred, could have been referred to you. And that's only from July until the end of the year?
Correct.
That's a lot of reduction.
Correct. And this contract for this pilot expires, um, obviously in July. But in the contract, I put it out to December because we were dealing with the fire department may having, was it? Fire record management and then you guys went to first due. So we had a, a change of, of how they were dealing with their, their system. So that was the delay. And now that they have first due, it's so much easier for them to bring the referrals onward. We're, we were averaging two to three referrals a week right now.
And Gary, roughly eighty percent of our calls are medical, correct?
Yes, so we, Councilman Henderson, we have.
It's about eighty percent.
Yep.
Okay. I got, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say one other thing. For example, for last year, we had a hundred and eleven calls. And that was for twenty-four addresses accounted for a hundred and eleven of our calls. Just those twenty-four. So with assistance of care resources, um, it's reduced our calls a fair amount. So we're not getting repeat calls back there again. Um, but as Amy said, it is a lot of the illness and pain calls. And that's where we're picking up where these people are not getting services in some capacity. Um, and then we continue to get called back to them in some, for whatever reason. Again, I think today it's two times or three times to the, third, third time today for the same address. So we're trying to work with that. I was on the phone with dispatch earlier tonight and with Amy earlier as well. So we can not have that call go out to the organization, um, if we don't need to. So we've been trying to get this particular individual some assistance.
With that particular person or just in general? Like an overarching reduction in call volume or are you just saying to that specific address?
No, we're, we're seeing a reduction overall. I mean, if we did not have care resources, use those twenty-four addresses, um, that would be a hundred and eleven calls, um, that probably would have been dispatched or at least two or three more times.
Oh, okay. So, sorry, I'm trying to quantify this cause I, the math matters, right? And the savings matter. Um, because we budget for four fire personnel each call, Gary, on a truck?
Um, I don't really budget specifically numbers. I would like to have four on a truck, but we don't necessarily have four in a truck.
I know we don't necessarily, four don't necessarily show up, but you have a budget number of how many would show up, correct? Three or four?
It's based on statistics. So we're averaging right now, probably a little over two, about two point three eight is what we're getting from Echo. Um, and so we kind of assume that that's kind of, kind of be the normal, if you will. So when we take a look at dollars and then we also have to take a guess at, um, how many calls we're gonna have as well.
I guess I'm just trying to quantify if you have three or four on a truck and that's what you're saying, not you, but with our call volume. And you're saying if there's three or four that show up on a truck, you could quantify the savings from care resources, right? Because you've reduced the amount of calls that we're going to by that twenty-whatever percent, right? Somewhere in there? Am I, is I math, mathing here?
Yeah, yeah.
There's a little bit of napkin math here, but I'm just trying to quantify the savings that your, the program is bringing to the citizens and the taxpayers by not having the firefighters respond to them, reducing overall call volume and their response.
So if we can just do some generic math, right? Let's just say that you have four firefighters making thirty dollars an hour that are responding on these calls.
Yep.
Right? And like Gary said, without our program, you may go there two or three times, right?
Yes.
Um, so if we were to apply that math to just this scenario with these, uh, calls that we were talking about, that would have been a savings of about thirty thousand dollars.
I think the bigger deal is if the firefighters aren't getting out of bed.
Correct. I think there's a, there's a dual savings, right? But I'm just, there's a savings to, which I would hope we would have captured in our budget moving forward, which leads me to my next question. But there's a savings to the taxpayer and there's also a savings to our firefighters who we continuously talk about being burnt out. I can attest to that, but we're not calling them out to people who we can't actually make a difference for. Where care resources comes in and is giving the care that they're looking for. When they're calling 911, they're looking for somebody to help, anybody. Somebody to be there, somebody to help and you're, there's a benefit to the citizens just because they're getting the care they need. There's a benefit to the taxpayer because we don't have the calls that we're sending the firefighters out to that we're not actually making a difference on, other than offering the resources. Which leads me to my next question and I'm almost done, I promise. Um, so we saw this large reduction in calls, right? That care resources helped us with. Is this something that we could expect to see like year over year? Like historically, has it been, you save a whole lot upfront or we drop call volume a whole lot? And then the next year it's a couple and the next year it's not a lot at all? Like, do you see it year over year being this effective?
We do, to the point to where AARP is now our national partner that believes in our process and our trainings and this program. Um, our average, and you can call the cities that we are in, our average is a forty percent reduction.
Year over year?
Year over year. Um, when we were in St. Louis Park, I started and their call volume was increasing, um, uh, by double digits every year. And, um, by the time they ended up going with a different model so I could move on to, you know, other cities, um, their call stayed still. Um, I started there in 2016 and by the time I left, their call volume was the same as 2012. Where Hopkins and Minnetonka and all the other cities around them were increasing by, you know, double digits, ten, fifteen, twenty percent. St. Louis Park's reduced by those same numbers consistently year after year after year. Um, we're in Hopkins and in Hopkins, um, can reach out to, to the city folks there. And in the city of Hopkins, we have reduced their repeat call volume to their sites and their nursing homes by ninety percent and their overall call volume by forty percent.
So I, gonna want to lead the witness here, but if we're an eighty percent medical call department and we continue with care resource, cause that's ultimately what you're asking, right? Like, I mean, down the line here, you're asking to continue on with this program. And we can continue seeing that same reduction in call volume.
Correct. And now's the time, right? Um, I, I look at the city of Dayton as we don't have senior buildings yet. And every time the senior building is built, you want to anticipate two 911 calls per year, per bed in your community risk reduction plan. Um, and so as your community, just like Kevin was talking about, you know, when you're looking at your comprehensive plans, um, think about how the number of people that are coming into your community and what that response is going to look like. And if you already have this program embedded in, you know, what you're doing, this program is, is, should be part of your community risk reduction. Where we're having different conversations with, you know, how can we work closely with your embedded social workers? How can we start looking at connecting some of the things that you were already dealing with? But just having that additional training and bringing those resources in. You know, AARP, who is our, our partner and working in our age-friendly work with the ten-year blueprint on aging, they have resources that could come into the city of Dayton and monies that they could provide to the city of Dayton to expand those resources and, um, be able to offer some additional in-home support and, and education, right? Um, and so I'll be following up with Jay and Kathy from AARP because I really want the council and the city staff to understand that these are things that could be here. And you, you just need to have the information to make an informed decision.
Okay. I have one last question and then I will stop. Um, in our, this isn't a question for you, Amy. Sorry. This is me talking a lot. Um, in our budget for 2025, did we account for this reduction? Was that savings of not going to these repeat calls in the budget? Or was it just we have projected to have whatever the number is amount of calls and we just budgeted off of that? Because if we didn't, should we be, right? We should, I think we should be. Maybe that's something we need to revisit.
I think if, if we see a pattern, we should be, absolutely.
Cause if you're saying you're doing two, you gave a number. I'm sorry, how many are we doing?
Two to three per week.
So if we're doing two to three per week and we're, I don't know, almost two months into this thing, that's a lot. So I don't, I guess I'm just wondering, like, does that open a bigger discussion of if the call volume is reduced by the thirty, what I, what was thirty?
Oh, thirty-four percent.
Thirty-four percent. And we can see that again this year. I would say that as a savings to the taxpayer to maybe not have to pay for something else, like an extra set of gear for our firemen, cause they need that or something else. Like it should, we should be quantifying that and doing something with it or adjusting the budget accordingly. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that we, you know, ultimately what we've seen is growth in call, call volume year over year. And I think, you know, at the base of it, that's what the budget gets built around. So, you know, if this is reducing that growth rate, you know, then we should, should be accounting for that.
Well, by thirty-four percent, that's not, you know, that's not a small amount, right? Like that's, that's large, that's substantial. So I don't think I'm opening a can of worms here, but I feel like there's more discussion there about the monies, more discussion about the structure, more discussion about where this whole thing goes from here. If we continue with care resources, does that change the, like, the trajectory of the department? Does that, what, what does that affect if again, we're gonna see this year over year, thirty-four percent reduction? Like, that's huge for a department that does eighty percent medical calls.
Councilman Henderson, I want to touch base. So we started in July with care resource connections and, um, we did the, we did the budget process starting in May or June. So we really didn't know what the, maybe the savings would be when we did the budget process for 2025, not knowing that, okay, how many calls are we gonna see, how many were, you know, duplicate calls? We're gonna see how many referrals are actually gonna take care of resource connections. You know, we can applaud them all day long, but they can't, can't force them to go.
Correct.
Um, I think what we look at for 2026 budget process would be, are we seeing that same thing this year? In 2025, actually, so that in 2026 when we're budgeting, we can look at that as a, as a point of, um, are we seeing actual reduction or not? We'd like to say yes. I mean, that's the idea.
A hundred percent. I, I guess, and again, I'm opening a whole can of worms. That's not really what this is meant for. But the department is moving in a direction where we're about to spend a substantial amount of money. And if we could save that money for the taxpayers, like, why wouldn't we, right? And so I think that begs the question of where's the, where does the department go if we have this? Cause before it was, you know, again, we're, we're burned out. We're doing too much. What can we do to alleviate that? And we thought, council made a decision, council before me and Sarah, made a decision. And so I guess I'm just looking at if we could really reduce it by thirty-four percent. Again, like, do we need?
Or find other ways to reduce call volume?
Correct. And I was, I think that a bigger discussion needs to be had. And I'm sorry for the knee jerk back and forth, but maybe again, this is probably not the best time to bring this up. But I feel like there's another conversation in there, given what we know now. And that doesn't really help because we just broke ground in a kitchen, but.
We can say it's a kitchen.
And, and again, I'm not trying to open up a big can of worms here. I'm just saying that I would like to revisit where if we're utilizing our resources effectively. Um, and it's working and it's actually doing what emergency services is supposed to do, right? That's the whole point is to help the residents. The whole point is the service to them.
I, I believe that's, at least I believe I put something in the, in the goals to, to look at that.
I, I saw a couple of them. So I, and when we revisit that, it would just, it doesn't mean it's not gonna happen. Doesn't mean I'm for or against anything. I would just like to honestly look at the, yeah, the number of calls. And the numbers matter. The data matters.
Um, can you go to the slide where you break down the, the calls?
Oh, yeah.
Or, I guess, yeah. So I noticed what I don't see on here. And I have a feeling it's a big chunk is anxiety.
Yep.
Um, because every one of those things can start as anxiety, PTSD. And I kind of wonder, do you, do you, do you have those resources to deal with that? I mean, maybe it's more associated with the VA, but.
Yep, we do. We do. Yep. And that's, you know.
It can be hard to determine, but it just.
Yeah. You know, and it's really, it's one of those things, um, we were, with the embedded social worker that you have from Hennepin County, their, um, main purpose truly is to deal with those mental health types of calls. Um, and so out of respect, we, you know, we would defer it over to there because those resources you already have in place and we don't want to duplicate services that you're already, you know, investing in. But you are correct. Every single one of these does have a mental health component to it. And so when we get a call, um, and we're working with the case, um, you know, the, the crews will go out, they'll offer the program. Are you open and willing to accept help? They say yes. They send their referral over to us and then we reach out to that person. And we come out to their home or we speak to them over the phone, get their, um, understand where their social terms of health are, who their supports are, if they have somebody. And then we take all the information that they share with us and we give that to their doctor. And we tell their doctor, we just have done a visit with your patient. This is what your patient is asking for and we have a list of things that they would like their doctor to help them with. Um, and then they sign the referral form and that becomes part of their medical record. Uh, because our doctor, Dr. Wilcox, our medical director, um, uh, is with me still at Care Resource Connection. And this is what we do in rural health. Um, and so we bring those folks to them. And like I said, if they don't have a provider, we will find them one. Um, and working with North Memorial, who is your, um, ambulance provider? Because I came from North, I know they have community paramedics. I know some different things we can pull into place. But they're able to deal with, we start with their care team and then we kind of build these, you know, circles around them because we know that if they are going to go to Hennepin County and see what services, that can take some time because they have to go through their finances. They have to figure out what they could qualify for. They may need somebody to come out and do a visit. Um, so we just want to make sure that they're not going through this roller coaster and constantly every, you know, twenty or fifteen days calling 911 again. And we just want to make sure that they're supported and they have those checkpoints. Cause we stay with these folks for a hundred and twenty days. It's not just a. Because we stay with these folks for a hundred and twenty days. It's not just a one and done. So we're checking in in thirty days. We're checking in at sixty, ninety, a hundred and twenty. And we're doing the mental health PHQ nines. If they have asthma, we're doing those ACTs. And the GADs, if they have anxiety, and we provide that information to their providers.
Any more questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Three Rivers Park District.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. Hi, my name is Jennifer DeJordan. I am Three Rivers Park Commissioner for this area. I've been the commissioner for quite some time. I represent Maple Grove, Brooklyn Park, Osseo, Dayton, which is my favorite town. Don't tell anyone else. I'm Champlin. And I just wanted to say hi and, um, and I hope, uh, over this next year to visit with each and every one of you to talk about our park district, any concerns you have or anything that I, that I can do to help. Or I think our relationship, uh, with Three Rivers Park District and the city of Dayton has been longstanding. And I hope, um, that we can be of service in any way to keep both of our organizations strong and our partnership, um, very well maintained throughout the year. So if anything else, I will turn it over to our amazing staff who knows everything. And if there's anything I can do at any point in time, please reach out or, or if there's any questions, um, after her presentation, uh, please let me know and I'll be happy to answer those as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Kelly Grisman. I'm the Director of Planning with Three Rivers Park District. It's nice to be back in the city of Dayton and, uh, welcome to the new council members. This is my first time in front of you. I just want to pause and also introduce our Superintendent Bo Carlson and then Principal Planner Anne Rexine. So we are all available to answer questions after my presentation. And the, the purpose today is really just to share information and the work that Three Rivers is doing on the West Mississippi River Regional Trail. There's been a lot of acquisitions happening in the recent past that's certainly caught us off guard. I think it's probably, uh, sparked some interest by the council. So this is just another good opportunity for us to connect and make sure we're going in the same direction and, and answer any questions that you have. So with that, I'm going to jump right in. So we have four different regional trails that are planned within the city of Dayton. And this is the same slide that I presented in July. Uh, but just for kind of setting up the context, we have the West Mississippi River Regional Trail, the Diamond Lake River, the Diamond Lake Regional Trail, excuse me, the Medicine Lake Regional Trail, as well as the Rush Creek Regional Trail. And today we're going to be talking specifically about the West Mississippi River Regional Trail, which when it's all said and done, makes up six of the planned eighteen miles within the city of Dayton. And that mileage does not include the regional trail miles through Elm Creek Park Reserve. So what this trail corridor is really, where it started from or what it's a, a composition of is a whole lot of different layers of plans, all the way from the federal level down to the city of Dayton's comprehensive plan. And when we sorted through all of those plans, what we realized is that there's two kind of common theme, themes happening on this river corridor. A desire to protect and restore the natural resources and a desire to have some type of multi-use off-road trail corridor. And that's really the role of Three Rivers Park District. So I'm not going to read through this whole list of everything, but, um, maybe for the sake of the audience and anyone that might be listening at home, this corridor is part of the Minnesota National River Recreation Area that's overseen by the National Park Service. So while it's not a national park, it is a unit of the National Park Service. It's also part of the Mississippi River Critical Corridor area that's overseen by the DNR. And there's all kinds of rules and regulations about setbacks and building heights and land uses. That's all outlined in your comprehensive plan and that's the diagram that's shown on this particular slide. It's also part of the Mississippi River Trail Corridor that's overseen or kind of envisioned by MinDOT as well as the National Park Service. And the, the list continues. And so we are truly just one piece of a broader complex pie. So the, the vision of the river or the West Mississippi River Regional Trail is really that it's a high-quality destination, multi-use trail that provides the best user experience reasonably feasible within your community. We have trails across Hennepin County of all different shapes and sizes and all different community types. And what we know is that trails that are along county roads and they're right, you know, right on that road shoulder are enjoyed and used very differently than trails that are off-road and have connections to natural resources, connect to local parks, connect to regional parks. Our vision for the city of Dayton is really wherever there's an opportunity to do it is to have a more natural resource focused corridor that really becomes, uh, an important community asset and something that the community can be proud of and that your residents are excited to be, to use. And it connects them to Elm Creek Park Reserve. It connects them to the river. And just to make sure that that river corridor is available for all of Dayton residents to be able to use and enjoy and experience. So this map shows the trail corridor that is in the long-range plan for the regional trail that which was previously adopted by the city of Dayton. And what I want to really call attention to is the letters A and B on this map. And it goes from the Gooden Park area to roughly North Diamond Lake Road. And this is the area that you've probably seen or heard about a lot of Three Rivers acquisitions. This river corridor probably present, pardon, that this portion of the river corridor provides the greatest opportunity to pull the, the trail off the road shoulder and have it be an independent corridor. Now I want to just pause and say, that's about a three and a half mile stretch of the river. And we can accomplish the trail by acquiring, you know, different pieces of land where there's an opportunity to do so. And we can also accomplish it if some of that land remains in private ownership. So Three Rivers is, we only move forward on a willing seller basis. And it's perfectly reasonable and acceptable to envision and to plan for a trail that kind of goes back and forth along the road shoulder for a section, then it pulls off where there's parkland, either land that we own or the land that the city owns or that the DNR owns, and then maybe goes back and forth on the road shoulder. It doesn't have to be an all-for-one approach. Definitely, like a hybrid is probably the right solution for this community.
When will we see that plan?
Well, that plan would be consist, or would be subject to who's a willing seller and when the trail is developed. So because we are not talking about condemnation or endowment domain at all and only willing sellers, it really just depends on who that lives on this corridor is interested in selling and when they're interested in selling.
And the trail will be built when?
The trail will be built most likely in phases. And I'm, if I can circle back to that, I have a slide on the end.
All right.
Is that, and if I don't address it, would you remind me and I'll make sure to pause?
I will, yes.
Thank you. So we're currently in the acquisition phase. Like I said, we're willing seller only. We really haven't gone and done mailings or posters. It's been word of mouth. Some council members have even stirred community members to reach out to Three Rivers Park District. And then in the future, once we have more land assembled, then we would start looking at how do we build different sections? Uh, at least in a, in a perfect world, that would be how we would move forward. We do know that there's a county road project happening in the next five to seven years. And we do anticipate being a partner in that project in some capacity. So this is the, that stretch, that A to B. So again, from the Gooden Park area down to North Diamond Lake Road. And this map, I, I understand it's hard to read at this scale, but there's three different colors. The dark blue is land that's already owned in public or it's already in public ownership. So all of this kind of whole area that's about three hundred and thirty acres, over two hundred and fifty acres is already in public ownership. And that's why it's interesting for Three Rivers, who is a natural resource-based park agency, to kind of be paying attention and say, wow, there's something that we can really build off of here and really create that community asset. That's the dark blue color. And then there's the blue, or the, excuse me, the, the green, light green color. That's all land that's privately held. And then there's color that's a light blue. And those are parcels that Three Rivers is currently working with those property owners in some capacity to acquire their land. Some of that may happen. Some of that might not happen. But for the sake of transparency, we put it on the slide today so that everyone is on the same page. And there's one more color on here and it's a kind of a magenta slashed hatch pattern. And those are areas that we've identified where because of the topography, because of the ditch, because of the road right of way, some type of special trail condition, can, special trail construction is likely or some type of easement. So if we were only to be looking at acquisitions or partnerships or easements, those are the areas that are really fundamental to make the regional trail aspect work. And there are twenty parcels highlighted and of those twenty, there are twelve that are currently still in private ownership. Here's kind of a zoom in, at least on a portion of that. And these are the three different parcels that Three Rivers is in some state of acquisition or acquisition exploration. So parcel A, we hope to close in next month. Parcel B, we are just doing the appraisal. Parcel C, we hope to close in April of this year. And that is the next item on your agenda for today. And while I'm on this slide, I want to just share that. It's really important for Three Rivers to be good stewards of the land that we own. So we will be already on the, the dark blue parcels where we own, reforesting and doing some other restoration efforts starting this summer. You've probably already seen that on the parcel adjacent to Gooden Park. We've, we've spaded in a lot of trees, but that same kind of work is going to happen on all of the parcels that we own. And we also are interested in working with the city on that Gooden Park node to realize the, uh, city's water trail plan. So this is a graphic from Hennepin County and this talks about their road reconstruction and rehab projects. And why I've included that today is, you know, doing the trail all at once is a pretty ambitious project. And maybe that's the appropriate direction that we go, or maybe we look at a more phased approach. The portions shown on this slide that is the red dash line that would go, you know, roughly from the city of Champlin all the way to like Elsie Stevens Park is probably the most important corridor for us to focus our efforts and to partner with the county to construct in this first phase. That's where you already have a lot of homes built, so great population. You've done a ton of investment in the Elsie Stevens and the Cloquet Overlook Park already. So to be able to connect residents to that in a safe manner is, I think, a high priority for both Three Rivers and the city. So at the end of the day, when we, when we think about when is this going to be done and how do we want to do this? This red dash line, I think, is our first phase of working together to get it done and doing it in partnership with the county and the road reconstruction or rehab projects. And mo, the majority of this, or excuse me, all of this land is, there's already right of way to do it. Um, and it doesn't overlap the piece we just talked about significantly. And where there is overlap, the city actually already owns a small outlet between the road right of way and whatever private, um, parcels are there. So if you can imagine from Cloquet Overlook all the way down to North Diamond Lake Road, there's just this small little outlet or sliver of land that the city owns that would more, um, that would work for the trail corridor. So we don't need any additional acquisition or we're not foreseeing additional acquisition needs to do this red, um, piece of the corridor. So that would be where, uh, I would encourage discussions for moving forward in the, in the shorter timeframe. The rest of it, I think, could happen whenever Three Rivers and the city and the county is ready to have that conversation and perhaps when additional acquisition, um, has occurred. This is that Gooden Park node and the Mississippi River Water Trail. So the city in 2021 adopted a water trail plan and did some concept plans on four different spots. Or at least there's a concepts plan for the Gooden Park area. And this is actually on land that Three Rivers Park District owns. So one of the things we would like to do is look at all of the land that we own and work with the city to see about what's the appropriate recreation offering or how we could work together to open up that public land. And, um, with the council's blessing, and I'm just kind of looking for a head nod today, we'd like to actually apply for an LCCMR grant to help the city realize the water trail project that's, um, envisioned for the Gooden Park area, but on land that's actually owned by Three Rivers Park District. So we would be looking at doing the non-motorized boat launch, uh, some preliminary parking and a paved trail to get to the boat launch and a little staging area. Some of the other elements of this plan could come at a later date. Um, and this would be requesting a $500,000 LCCMR grant, utilizing the two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand the city already has from, I believe it was congressional designated spending that's left over from the Elsie Stevens project. And then $50,000 from Three Rivers plus the use of the land. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
So you mentioned that willing sellers.
Yep.
And obviously, but at a certain point, you just have to build it. You can't just wait. So like, is there a certain, is it when, when the road gets built? Or is there like a certain percentage of properties, like, once we hit this percent, then we're going to build it no matter what? What, how do you know when that moment comes?
Uh, that's a great question and I don't know when that moment comes. But I think it's a, it's a conversation between all the different parties. Maybe it's, hey, you guys are developing even more. You have enough people that are going to use it. It makes sense for us to prioritize getting that piece done. And that's where that, uh, go back. This red line, to me, makes the most sense, but it's just a line on a map. We haven't had any formal conversations with city staff or the county of, hey, this is where we should really be focusing our efforts. But this would serve, this would be, give you the biggest bang for your buck, at least initially, or our buck initially. We're not asking the city to pay for the regional trail. That's Three Rivers expense.
Is that just alongside, I noticed that's on the south side of the road.
It's graphic. It's only a graphic. So it's readable.
Would you prefer it to be along the actual Mississippi?
Not in this corridor. It really follows Dayton River Road for the whole thing. But between North Diamond Lake Road and the Gooden Park area, the road is very close to the river. There's about one parcel, um, between the river and the road. And that's where there's the greatest opportunity to connect people to the river. But again, we don't need to acquire all of that to make the trail vision work.
Now, some of the parcels that you, that Three Rivers owns currently has houses on it. Like, what are you do, like?
Good question.
Are you tearing them down? Are you renting them out? Are you going to try to break those parcels apart?
Yep. So the, all the parcels we've already acquired, we have removed the homes. And the parcels that we are currently actively requiring, we are working on all different options. And one of them is to move the houses to other parcels or to put them up for bid and allow people to bid on them. And then they can coordinate the move on their, their own. Demoing the houses and, you know, just full decon is, or deconstruction is always an option. And then we're also going to be working with your fire department to do some practice burns.
Considering we're constantly getting hammered that we don't have affordable housing and we need more housing, it just seems a little wasteful.
Yep.
To destroy perfectly good homes.
It's absolutely something that we've been talking about and are trying to come up with some solutions with actually the city as a partner in, in some instances.
Sure. Well, I'm going to limit my content, comments to things that I feel like are concerns for the city. Obviously, full disclosure, I live on this road. And so there are concerns that residents have, um, that I think are in part in the way that the message is being delivered to, uh, potential sellers. I know your, the tagline is willing sellers only. That's not the impression that the people in the neighborhood are getting. All right. So there's miscommunication there at, at best. It also, you point in our resolution, which will be coming up next, uh, to a resolution that was passed by the city in support of this trail in 2016. There are, there is language in there that is not being followed at all. It talks about this, uh, plan lining up with the city's comprehensive plan and other plans. If you look at our comprehensive plan, it does not show parkland from Elsie Stevens to the old village. It doesn't, um, it doesn't show that in the zoning plan either. So we're not in alignment here. And, um, for this group, I want to say, I don't, in my time here, we've never had a conversation about, are we willing to give up an entire neighborhood for a, a bike trail? I think that's important. I also think that we weren't, where it says to, in this resolution, the city of Dayton intends to enter into a regional trail cooperative agreement with the park district, formally outlining the acquisition, design, implementation, operating responsibilities for the West Mississippi River Trail. We're not doing any of those things. We get updates from you a couple of times a year. But where are we in, in this planning role? Where are we, um, discussing acquisitions other than after they've essentially already happened?
May I respond?
Yes.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. Um, we actually have a cooperative agreement already in place with the city of Dayton. And we've, we've had to amend it several times as we work together in partnership to get the trail built through Elsie Stevens, uh, Park. trail built through Elsie Stevens Park over the last couple of years. I think it's perfectly acceptable and perfectly appropriate to further revise the resolution to best meet the needs of the city, and I think you could probably still do that this evening. And one of the reasons why I'm here today is to talk more through how we want to work together and how our visions align or don't align, and what changes you would like to see moving forward so that we are staying in line with the city and are really approaching this as a partnership.
I think that would be great. I don't think that we're anywhere near that today. Nobody knows what the plan is because the plan that's described in the document relating to this trail is vague at best around property acquisition. And so there isn't a plan that we can see that describes which properties are in, which properties aren't necessary. And we're far enough down this trail that that should exist, and we shouldn't, we should know about it. We should see it. Anybody that wants to see it should be able to go on your website and see exactly what the future vision is for their property. Are they on the hit list? Is it, doesn't matter? And so on. And I think we've got a lot of concern in my neighborhood over what this is, and I certainly can't give any answers to this kind of stuff because I don't know either. We don't know where the county is at on the road redesign. I think this all plays together, but we're not at that table either.
Yeah, thank you. I will say the long-range plan is vague. You're absolutely right. It does create an opportunity for us to revisit and amend the plan to better align with the city's needs and to provide that additional detail, and we're very open and supportive to doing that. In the long-range plan, it does include in the appendix all of the properties where we know we will need easements or where special construction consideration is needed, and as well as language about the importance of connecting to the river and acquiring property where there's an opportunity to do that. But I can absolutely appreciate having more transparency and working collaboratively to make sure that we're both on the same page, both agencies.
I think we need to get there. Yeah, and as it relates to easements, because not all of these properties are necessary or even necessarily desirable for this trail. And so I think, you know, honing that down to what is the plan? Where do you need an easement? Where do you need nothing? Where do you really have to have that property and make this thing go? I think that needs to be out there. I think that needs to be clear to everybody.
Yep. And I think some of that will come as design happens, and you go and you do all the survey work, and you better understand where exactly will the trail go or where can't it go? Where are your design limitations, your topography limitations, your drainage limitations? The level of planning we do in a long-range plan is very similar to a comprehensive plan where you're really outlining a concept or a vision, and we don't yet have that detail. Hopefully, in partnership with the county, we'll be able to do some of that for portions of the trail. I can't speak for the county as to whether there's an openness to do the trail design for the whole thing. But it also will really just come down to what property owners are interested in selling to Three Rivers and which ones are not. And if there's an interest in selling, that gives us that opportunity to locate the trail in a different spot, right, than if they're not interested in selling. And that's where you can start to think about the trail as more of that hybrid, where sometimes it's along the road and sometimes it gets pulled off. But we won't know where we can pull it off until we know who's a willing seller. Most people don't necessarily know they're going to be a willing seller in three years or five years or eight years. Their life situation changes, and we never know who's going to call and when they're going to call.
Yeah, well, and I think the dynamics change without a plan being in place. And that's the part I'm trying to emphasize here.
Yep.
Because if you buy property on one side of someone's house and then buy property on the other side, where do you think that leaves them? They may not have thought that way five years ago, and now the story has changed because they're on an island. And with the sort of random acquisition of properties along this road, that's going to continue to happen if this keeps going the way it is.
Yeah, you bring up a great point. It does change the neighborhood dynamic, and with the willing seller approach, that's definitely what we're finding ourselves is you have a piece of property here because those property owners were interested in selling to Three Rivers, and then maybe you have another property owner that's not interested in selling or not interested in selling at this time, and then maybe three parcels over, it's another property owner that is sold to Three Rivers. So in that state of change, it does feel a little bit, hey, like, what's happening? It's popcorn-ish, I guess, would be the best way of saying it. But sitting down with city staff or with the council and better understanding what are your visions or how might we accomplish this together, or where does it make sense to do additional acquisition? Where does it make sense to keep it, like, the single-family homes that are consistent with all the other plans? We're certainly happy to do that.
And that would also lead to, don't destroy houses yet. I mean, because if you get this lot and you tear the house down, but you can't get the lots on either side of it, now you have this single standalone lot, you rip down a perfectly fine house, and it would make more sense maybe to actually leave the house on it, resell it, and acquire a continuous, like, a, what's the word I'm looking for?
Continuous?
Well, just a string of, like, a string of property. Because it also, I get what you're saying about pulling the trail in and out, but you don't want to go in and out every other property. You would like to have several in a row where you can get down by the river and then come back out. And so it also kind of seems a little silly to, not necessarily just to buy it, but like to tear the house down without having at least the property on either side. Maybe once you got three in a row or a certain acreage in a row, then I can see it making sense. But until you get to that point, if you want to buy it and hold it and hope, sure. But, yeah, we're constantly getting pressure for affordable houses, and a lot of times it's our older houses that are the affordable options, and they're the ones you're tearing down. So it's like, thank you for tearing down the cheap house so that we're left with just the more expensive houses.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the line itself is valuable. It's on the river. The land has value there, which is why my other thought is, is there a way we could split it? So maybe make it a smaller parcel and leave that smaller, potentially more affordable home, particularly if you can separate it from the river a little bit and get your trail closer to the river. If there's any way we can do that and preserve our older, more affordable homes. And then, like I said, it also leaves you guys, so you're not with the onesy-two, like this onesy, onesy, onesy thing, which is silly.
I think those are all great points. The one thing I want to address is that a lot of our acquisition funding comes from the Metropolitan Council, and they have strings attached as to how we can use the property, and we are not allowed to lease the property or rent it. So I can appreciate the comment about how do we figure out the affordable housing and the rental stuff. I think that's where selling the houses and moving them to other property that's local might be an option, as well as the creative solution on, hey, can we subdivide and maybe create smaller parcels that makes it more affordable?
I think that would also alleviate some concerns, at least I have. I just see you guys buying up all of our river property, and, yeah. So if we can somehow get a trail there and not lose that property, I definitely want to explore that to some extent.
And it's one thing to have patches, like Elsie Stevens, like, having nice patches is absolutely, but then, like, leave some chunks alone.
Yeah.
I love the park, right? But like, our city's already more park than, like, any other city. So we do need someone to pay the taxes.
Do we have anybody in the audience that has any questions for Three Rivers? Yeah, come on up. Just name an address and spiel.
Crystal Fashant, 16860 Dayton River Road. Really, my question is simple, and it's when I called the Three Rivers Park Commissioner, didn't get an email back twice. Did talk to the superintendent, who was very kind and helpful, and the one thing that I asked for was a community meeting so that us neighbors can be under the same understanding as what you're doing here. It's really difficult to sit in the audience and listen to your home and everything you've poured into it be talked about as a parcel. I absolutely agree about tearing down homes. That's also on my list. But I'm very disappointed that I'm not hearing a community meeting being discussed, and that's what I'd like to ask for, please. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, anybody else have any questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, on to item H. Let's do an item H.
Hey, members of the council, yes, so in front of you, it's an easier resolution for support of the land acquisition by Three Rivers Park District. The presentation was given before, so you could ask any questions you may have. I don't know if we could put any slide together. Yeah, there you go, just quickly. And just to support, so. Any questions? Please, staff is sitting here for answering.
I do have a question on that. Oh, where? So it, sorry, my packet, it refers to the 2016 resolution.
Yes.
Where can I find that? Was that attached?
It was not.
Yeah.
The Council of Fashion requested it.
Thank you. Because I just realized, I assumed it was there and I couldn't find it. Okay, thank you. I will need a minute to read this so we can go on to other questions.
I think it was referenced a couple of times during the Council of Fashion's questions for Three Rivers Park District related to planning and some of the conversations that need to be had, and in general, like, those are the highlights of the resolution that was passed in 2016. And apologize, I wasn't trying to hide that from anybody. We've passed, I think it was one of the land acquisition support, but I think it was the end of last year, maybe, so before this council was able to see it.
Can I ask just like an overarching question?
No.
Just spiel out. I'm sorry. Can we have a discussion about what the, like, if this was passed in 2016, that's a long time ago. A lot has changed theoretically in that timeframe. Can we have, what do you know, is that an open house? Like, how, I guess it depends on who you want to be able to talk, but...
It's not me.
No, no, not you. That's not what I, I'm sorry. Can we have an open discussion about what the trail looks like, about what, you know, Three Rivers wants to do? Because again, like, I get four trails, trails are great, but if we have no idea really, and this is 2016, that's a long time ago, no idea of what they're thinking, what they're planning, and I'm trying to look at their maps like the SPAG.
Yeah, we could just have staff coordinate a meeting with Three Rivers and get it on the agenda at some point.
And that would give those living in the neighborhood the opportunity
Yep.
to also come in and have a say in a discussion? Because ultimately, that's what, you know, obviously, the city level matters, but again, you're talking about somebody's home as a, I don't think it was meant that way.
No, it wasn't, but...
But, I mean, if it affects you, and it could affect you, or you're like, hey, absolutely not, never, ever, you know, like, that would probably be good for them to know, and I guess it would be good for us to have an updated vision on what they're thinking, what we're thinking.
Yes. And the other thing is, is this item specifically, we do have to approve this.
I know.
So that, yes, it would be good to have an idea of what's going on.
The city staff is happy to set up a meeting, whether that's a work session or if it's a separate day, it's fine too, but we'll kind of look for...
I would love to have your parks commission at whatever this is.
That's a great idea. If we have a work session, and again, this is just lack of knowledge, would, obviously, David, your home is part of it, so you would tell your neighbors, but those affected by the trail would be, they would get a letter, they would get some sort of correspondence. How would they all know that they should show up and voice their opinion?
Yeah, we could make, it could be a public hearing notice based on the work session and whatever else you wanted to make it. There would be no action physically taken out of work session just because that's not allowed.
Correct.
But then we'd have a separate action item during that meeting, if that's what we wanted to do. If we wanted to hold it on a separate day in total, we can ultimately do that as a special meeting, and then we just have us the public hearing there if you wanted to have public input on that.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure everybody gets the opportunity to talk about it and to, again, it's really up to the individual parcel owners or homeowners, what they think and what they feel about, you know, how this is moving forward, and their opinion matters. And, you know, like, I don't want a home on this stretch, and I'm sure you have a strong opinion because you do, but I would like everyone to be able to say what they need to and to be part of the plan, if you will.
No, I think that'd be really important to do, and I...
Yep.
That's what Crystal was just asking.
I'm outgoing? I hear you.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's great. I also think we, as a council, need to have a discussion about what we see the future of this stretch being.
Yep.
Whether, well, are we okay with all of those homes disappearing at some point?
Right.
And, you know, well, we need to have that discussion, and we haven't.
I mean, 2016's a long time ago.
Because it has, well, that too, but, yeah, that too. But I think that with the current situation, you know, we, the vision has changed, in my view, by Three Rivers, from a trail along the road to a trail going to the river. And I think that we've not had that discussion about losing that revenue. I think Sarah's point about affordable houses, these are not, these are not all mansions along this stretch of road. These are fairly affordable houses in Dayton for the most part, and, you know, are we okay with that? And I think we need to have that discussion.
All right. I'm sorry, Dad.
That's good, great direction. I need a...
Need a motion or...
Need a motion or a second.
So I can just say that I personally would be okay saying yes to this particular one because this was clearly a willing seller and all that, but I personally wouldn't vote yes on another one without having, like, I want this before we have another one.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
I think that's where I'm at, too.
Yeah, I'll just say yes to this one, but then something else has to happen before any others come forward.
I agree with you, Sarah. I think we're too far down on the trail to make this the okay corral or whatever you want to call it, but...
And this, particularly for the seller, because the seller probably has plans. What's not anticipating us coming in and being like, no, so...
No, I don't think that's, I have no interest in trying to block this one, but I also have no interest in looking at another one until we've got a lot more information.
I agree.
I agree. So I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, we are on to item I, DCM Farms revised site plan.
We're only 50 minutes behind schedule.
Do you need a charger?
Good job. Don't want, what is it? The code for point with that?
Well, we lose time on the next one.
Sorry, I didn't yell. I yelled.
No?
It's fine.
Okay.
Can you get there?
It's harder to get down there, but...
We only have an hour scheduled, please.
Well, we already used 50 of that hour, so you have eight minutes remaining. I take responsibility, I'm sorry.
So this is, I'm going to refer to this as an informal review of DCM Farms or progress report, essentially. Where the project...
Can we shut that door? I don't want to kick them all out, but...
No, no.
Oh, you can't shut it.
Actually not.
When can we kick them all out?
It's a parking lot party now.
Where we're at with the process, so the planning commission has tabled it or is continuing the public hearing from their, it's February, from February to March 6th. And so in between that time, it's, the council cannot take action on it until the planning commission provides a recommendation. So this is more of a status report of what's changed in the last few weeks or so. We do have a revised plan since the planning commission has reviewed it, so this is all new that the public has not seen. The map on the left is the plan as of January 7th, and the plan on the right is February 21st. The developer has essentially took a lot of the comments that the planning commission had and tried to incorporate, incorporated it into revisions. And the major changes are included in the staff report. I'm going to find what page this is on quickly. But the short explanation is, I'm going to refer to it as just skinny lots. The number of skinny lots has been reduced quite significantly. So, for example, in the 40-foot lots, those have been reduced from 123 lots to 68.
103, not 123.
100, thank you.
103 to what? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Sixty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
Side yards were changed, so the January plan had five-foot side yard setbacks. That's been increased to seven and a half feet. And the total number of lots has reduced from 266 down to 253. Um, and the total number of lots has reduced from 266 down to 253. Um, major changes on the plan itself, uh, probably the biggest change, any other than the, the lot sizes, is this cul-de-sac has been continued as a through street. And what that does is it re, it eliminates this intersection. Um, there's still, uh, small town home lots in the northeast corner, although the street has been widened to, uh, to be, uh, to comply with public, uh, as a public road standards. So, but otherwise, we, we've got the whole hour or so, uh, to try to answer any questions or just hear what the council's comments are.
Just want to, just know for the council mayor and council this item cannot be approved or whatever, this is just for more discussion. So they can give the developer more feedback. Um, you can expect this formal feedback and formal information to come in March, just in a while.
The, the 3.1 per acre, that's just to the southern section, is that what that?
Uh, three, uh, the three units are 3.09 units and acres for the whole project.
Oh.
Uh, with 3.78 units per acre is specific to the northeast corner.
Now, does that take out the, um, various holding ponds?
No.
And, but when we actually get to do it from that council, we get to take this?
No, we don't.
Okay, what could it?
That counts as developable area, same thing with streets.
Okay. What do we get to take out? I thought there's some things.
Streets count too?
Uh, except for arterial roads, but like, local streets count.
Local streets.
Okay.
Um, land that's publicly protected, so for example, the northwest corner includes parkland, that, that is netted out.
Got it, okay.
It does not count.
Okay.
We get to remove very little, is the answer.
Yeah.
So like, with this project, there, uh, there's one very small wetland that, uh, does not meet the de minimis, so in other projects, we have wetlands that are taken out, but in this case, there, there really aren't any to preserve.
John, what is our, um, let's see, how do I word this? What is our requirement for regular frontage?
For the R3 district, so this is the comparison, this is being done as a PUD. R3 district, it, it's 62 feet wide, so 30, and it does allow, the R3 district does allow 30% of the lots to be less than 62 feet.
But the average is 62?
Yep, yes.
And that's measured at the street or at the house?
Setback.
Oh, it's setback. And what's the average here?
54, for the entire development. I believe it's 54.
Yeah, Tom Eaton, come on.
So, probably one thing before we talk to the lot averages, the one other thing we did.
Oh, Tom, if you could pull the microphone closer.
Can I get your name and address?
Yeah, it's, uh, Tom Dean, 11261 Fernbrook Lane. Dave.
Thank you.
So probably just the last on the lot sizes, we did end up adding 16, 65-foot wide lots. That really didn't talk about, you know, they're just the 50s and, um, but I had, uh, today, um, the engineer ran all the setbacks and all 253 lots, the average, just on the whole, is 60.3 feet per lot.
Okay. My math is at the rate of furniture.
That was the right way, and I just had him going and take, uh, take through the math off the.
Setback.
Yeah, setback, and figured they got everything electronically.
But you're saying the whole thing is just right at 60?
Yeah, and I, um, it was late in the day, but I did send the staff a, a whole report with every lot, every footage.
It's a long spreadsheet.
Yeah, seven of them, seven, seven pages, I think, so.
Here's where I struggle with this whole thing, me, me personally. I, I don't like the seven and a half foot setbacks. Quite some time ago, we went to 10. This whole development is going to be seven and a half. This whole development is under the 62, it's 100% 100 all the way across. I, I, to me, if we can get rid of the, the 40, the 40-foot lots really hurt this whole development, in my, in my opinion. I just can't. I want to build them that tight, and that's me personally.
And, and I think, I got to say, I'm really, and I'm good, I'd like to really get good feedback, I think the last time, the times, you know, the Planning Commission gave some, but I thought, probably, and then there's some new members here, that, you know, I, I think what we're looking for, and I wouldn't say it was total disagreement, is looking just for different housing product in the city. And, and I think where the, the 40s are at is an, is an alley load, so instead of taking a townhome, putting four houses together, then they usually sit backing up to Major Road, which would be Fernbrook, which we have some on the, on the Sundance Greens, because now we'll have front, you know, and the streetscape of that street is tremendously different. Everything is LP, so when you do LP, it just allows more color variation, you know, most, you know, most vinyls that are used are based onto about five to eight colors, because they're lighter colors, and they fade, right, if you use a darker color, where you don't have that in the LP, so I think that was my purpose of, of doing that, and if you look, a couple of areas we did, did change to make exact is, initially, so these are still 40, and they were, this didn't change, they were initially seven and a half foot setbacks. Around the edge before, we had 40s, and these are all 45s. We had the house back in here, perhaps we removed that, so that's why we actually get, although we added 45s, we do get, uh, two more lots in that area. Where down here was, we got, reduced 16. And then, if we, here, these were 50 and 55s, these are all 55s. These are 50, 55s, they're all 65s. These here were, um, 40, 45s, they're now all 50 minimum, but sometimes it just doesn't work out, so that's where you may see footage, we'll have 55s, maybe a few bigger ones. These were a mixture of villas at 50, 55, they all went to 55. And then this is 65, 75, 65, those were the, the original ones. And then if we went just on the south side, in the Sundance Green, on 113th, if I give you an idea, that density, including the townhomes, is 2.7 acres. So this is a little denser. At, uh, at, you know, it's about three if you went just to the north side of 113th. It's the piece up, you know, along the road, that, uh, that changed quite a bit. So if you look, the other thing then, um, when we, Sundance Green, these lots here, these got a little wider here in the back, but these in here are 50-foot wide, currently, with a seven and a half foot setback. The reason I bring that up is just that if you were to look at, at a house, and just kind of see what was built, the furthest east street is Glacier, and currently, there's two that have just come up for sale in the last month. One's just shy of 521,000, the other one's 639. So, um, you know,
Those are 50-foot lots?
50-foot wide lots, yeah.
Yeah, I, I watched it a couple of times, I didn't realize that.
I personally don't mind, I, I like that there are a variety of product, as they say. Not everyone wants a giant house and a giant yard to take care of. But we, like, I speak for myself, which I know is extreme, because now I have 18 acres and a lot of land, but before that, I lived in a townhome and I loved everything about it. I didn't have to do any of the snow removal, I didn't have to do any of the lawn care, I just, and, but I owned my own house, right? Like, I had the right to do what I wanted in the inside, if I wanted to remodel my kitchen, I could, like, I loved homeownership, I didn't want any of that outside, so, and then, of course, I moved to 18 acres, um, and have all of the, all of the.
Yard work now.
To do, yes. We have several lawn mowers now. Uh, but, I guess my point is, so I'm okay, I'm, I, unlike Scott, I am okay having the smaller, I just, to me, the beauty of the townhome was, I didn't have to do any of the yard work, but I still had homeownership, where these tiny little lots feel like, I still have to do yard work, but it's a, like, I don't actually get a yard, like.
You can use a weed blip.
If you could, if you could bring that back, John, so, and then it does change, there are some here, so this piece here is all associated maintain.
Okay, okay.
That will snow with the grass. This piece here is villas, retirement.
Yeah.
This here will be HOA.
Okay, okay.
This piece here will be HOA, you know, kind of more of the retirement, you know? Here, these lots here, the seven and a half, we're figuring that to be homeowner maintained, you maintain your yard. There are some deeper yards there, but it's one more variety, um, what, you know, just regular homeownership, uh, insurance is, right? Inflationary cost. They're finding that they're getting fewer companies willing to carry the townhomes.
Why is that? I heard that. Why is that?
You, you know, I, I don't know, I think, I think it's because some of the early ones had a lot of other, I, I don't even know, if there was more maintenance to them, what, what, I can't answer that, I guess, is, maybe it's just they figure cost of when you have, you know, maybe, maybe, I don't know, is there bigger buildings, is there, when you don't have to take care of the outside, there's less concern, damp, I have no idea. But, uh, they're finding the HOA dues, so by the time if you take HOA dues along with the snow removal and everything, in the townhomes and Sundance this year, they're going to go up and they're going to be roughly 300 bucks a month. So if you add 300 bucks a month, and you still pay for interior insurance, so it pays for the exterior insurance.
Yeah.
So there are some fees that would get added on to a single-family lot, but if you look, um, then they require sprinkler systems, there's other costs that realistically, those smaller, single-family homes might only be 40 to 50,000 dollars more.
What requires a sprinkler system?
Townhomes.
This is lawn sprinkler you're talking about, right?
No, in the building.
In the building.
Fire suppression.
Yeah, fire suppression.
And if there's any holes in them, then they have to fix them, and you get charged for that.
So there's, there's other costs, there's other construction costs, you know, on the common walls, you know, for fire protection and things. So those aren't as cheap as you, you think, and now you take the insurance, now you take that difference in insurance, and add that as a monthly payment, now just, just say somebody can have 250 dollars more a month to put to home payment. So that's, that's where I think you'll see this product becoming more common. I'm not going to say the townhomes are out, but, and I just thought it'd be a nice variety to break it up.
I didn't realize they had to have sprinklers. That's not cheap.
For a while, it was even duplexes, I believe, think code now's duplexes you don't, but anything over.
Three?
Yeah, three, three and more.
That's a scary question. Townhomes are such.
So.
Uh, one other comment, you guys can all get your rocks ready for this one. I personally am not opposed, and I understand, we need a number of lots to make this whole thing work, I get it. Dollars matter. I am not opposed to taking that three-acre row park and putting it in the lo, into homes.
I don't know that we were kind of closed out that discussion, because it seemed like, it seemed like this was a lot of park for that area, but.
Uh, that way you get a little more space in these 40-foot lots.
But isn't the park area not counting against us?
It is not.
Yeah, it is.
So, won't change, so putting houses there isn't going to change density?
But you can widen, you can widen these out, the little 40-foot, you can spread them out a little bit.
But my point is, adding houses here, you've actually also added acreage here, and so I'm not sure it would have that much impact on the overall, on that density.
It's going to wash.
Yeah.
It might wash, but it gives him extra homes instead of, if these went to 45 or 50, then it would help him with some more lots on the other end. He, to get this whole thing, it takes 62 foot for an average, nine more lots got to go. I mean, right now, this thing is 100% under the requirement.
You're trying to work getting rid of which park?
But, and I think part of that is the PUD.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it, I get it.
And I get the, the roundabout, right? Probably going to come and say who's going to have to pay for the roundabout. Development, and.
Like I said, dollars matter, I get it, I understand that. I just don't like them so close together.
You know, we talk about traffic, right? Not one more house gets built in Dayton, basically Fernbrook is going to keep getting busier. So I do think the, the roundabout will help slow traffic down.
It's a good thing.
And help, yes.
Speaking of which. On that, you know, that, one of my concerns is, is that, that last house in that row of existing homes along Fernbrook, and how that roundabout works with their, their driveway, and it looks like it doesn't, that those people would have to go north to go south, and.
Two houses, right?
And I think that's where, I think there's a couple of things there, as, as, as the county really, right, I'm going to have, you know, I mean, city will get input, I know me, I'll get, as a developer, will get no input how that, that lays out. And so one of the reasons why we just said, hey, let's just table this whole commercial area, I haven't marketed it to anybody, nothing, really need to see how that road's going to line out. But I mean, can they put a meeting at the, at the end, just, you know, but then have a part, you know, a space in between so people can cut across?
Like a cutout in the, is, is that something the county would swap?
We don't have an answer on it yet, we have been in contact with them about it.
Does it seem like something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whether it be tainted or just breaks in the median to allow access to the driveways, but they didn't say no.
It would be a little awkward coming out of roundabout and somebody's making a left-hand turn right there, but how often's that going to happen?
Yeah, but your traffic is going slow enough that it's.
Yeah, no, I, I think that, yeah.
I mean. Just so those driveways aren't cut off, I guess that's, that's my concern.
Try pretty, you know, genuinely, decently to work with everybody on, on that, you know, section of houses, they got, you know, drainage issues, et cetera, but if it meant whatever, you know, the county can, I, I understand it, I just, I think it's, I wish I could tell you, yeah, no problem, but that's probably right, Jason, you talking to county.
What happens, now, maybe we get this answer before this development even starts, but what happens if we're, uh, five months into this thing and the county says, no, there is no roundabout there?
Yeah.
Then we got a problem.
Yeah.
We're hoping for an answer to that, like, before this goes to the council.
Before it ever starts.
I, if somebody's footing the bill, I can't see the county.
You're saying no? You want to pay for a roundabout?
And I think, you know, we talked, and, and there's po, uh, potential that we can move it somewhat south, but you're lining with 114th, but then, as we go there, then we have the houses on the east side of the street, right, so it's kind of, 222.
And I noticed this is like a communications terminal, just not far east of the road, I don't know what that would cost to move, but, but yeah, if we could slide that down just a, you know, a little bit, that would help too, but I guess that's, like you say, up to the county.
But I mean, I think it's a, coming back with some variety, trying to make it affordable, I mean, I think, you know, Fernbrook is right now the main corridor, 610 isn't moving, right? You know, would that development make sense in the center of the city right now? Probably not, you know, and, and I can see where the bigger lots and all that come to play, but.
So to counter a little bit what Scott said, I, with this kind of density, I think the need for the park is greater, so I wouldn't be a fan of eliminating that corner.
And, and I'll be honest. Yeah, that's not, I mean, I mean, that's why you guys are up there, and, and whatever you decide on that.
But I do, I do like the variety of housing types in here, and I think that's what gets me to this kind of density and being comfortable with it, is that there is some variety. I also appreciate, I kind of took this thing apart a little bit, but you reduced the number of 40-foot lots by 70, right? And then, it looks like the 45s and 50, you might as well say you just kind of swapped, but there's a, you know, and the rest of the gain is in the 55 and, and bigger size lots, and, and I think that, that improves the, the overall development, I think that this version of it is much better than the previous one.
It just isn't necessarily for this development, but, so, it sounds like other cities are looking at, what is our pavement width standard for developments like this?
Interresidential, 32-foot.
Yeah, so I'm hearing a lot of cities looking at reducing that, because it helps the speeds, it helps get more, less pavement, less maintenance. Is that a thought we, we should be looking at? Because it seems like, that's a lot of road.
Yeah, it really depends on the development, um, when you rely on on-street parks. When you rely on on-street parking, that's really difficult to do. The narrower is.
This does.
Is more, I mean, if, if you have bigger setbacks and you can accommodate more parking within the driveway, something you could consider. But if we go much narrower, if we go any narrower than thirty feet, it's really tough to get parking.
When you're, yeah, when you're counting on on-street parking, I suppose.
And I think that's where one of the things, there was a discussion at the planning commission just about the, you know, please pay that road along Fernbrook without it was only one fronting, but, you know, make it wide so you have parking and.
What is that alleyway? Is that thirty-two, so is that a standard?
No.
Uh, what's narrower?
Yeah, I think, I think that's twenty, and that alley's, that's private, so the HOA has to clean that out and really not looking to park on that.
And also snow removal, like where's snor, snow going, where's snow going to stay? This winter, we didn't have any, but two winters ago, even if you get in there and try to take it out, like there's, you can't get in and take everything out all the time. It has to sit somewhere for a while. So in Minnesota, we do also need to account for some of that.
But that's just off. I mean, that's, you, you could almost make the argument that more street causes you issues because now you got more snow to remove, but.
When you're so, like when you, yeah, if you have no.
And the one thing, the alleys, you know, if you took, say you went to northeast Minneapolis, that old alley, you know, the garage is detached, these are attached, you know, so, you know, the problem is, especially those, that alley was, you know, your garage is like built right next to the alley.
Well, I know it's angled right, too.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. So there wasn't any.
You got to make a sharp.
This, this, this you wouldn't have. I mean, it'd be your traditional driveway just to the, to the backyard.
One of the things, I know the, we're not, we are and are not talking, you still have that commercial spot identified as commercial, a conversation that's come up kind of repeatedly in all sorts of different places, is that Dayton has not been thinking about, you know, the senior tsunami, the aging in place and having, having places for people, you know, you're starting to get there with maybe thinking about retirement villas, but if that, some are part of what's currently earmarked for commercial, went to something that was more for senior housing, whether it is just, just, just seniors or whether it's like a care, you know, some sort of stepped-up care facility, does that change the density enough that we could get larger lots to make Scott happy, but still meet the density we need and not take away the park? Is that something that?
Um, but I think there you're really kind of, I don't know how that density's calculated, and I think that's not in the district for, for density. Now, answering the question, am I open to, uh, an assisted living? Like, I just threw some stuff out there, you know, I think the engineer really just spitballed it. I'm not even going to put on any, like, yeah, you know, just what's, what's their option? I, I would, uh, I mean, I'm listening to this, I'm seeing my dad right now through it, would it make sense? Sure. I look at it, I do know along the golf course, yeah, in Sundance screens, we had the apartment, that's a fifty-five plus, that's what I came in and marketed at.
Yeah.
I could have many times been here in front of, with just market rate. I'm like, I came, I started with fifty-five.
Yeah.
And right now, I just can't get anybody interested. And I, and I'm not going to lie, it's not like I, you see signs I'm marketing hard, but a few of the people I talk to, I do think that's different than the assisted living.
Yeah.
And, and one of the things I think, um, maybe one, you know, one would be bad because you'd have, you know, maybe you can put somebody, you know, there's a lot of houses there, right? Your family could be close by to visit.
Yeah.
But I don't really know anything, you know, I don't know anything, anything about that business, nor than, you know, I know, right, there's been, um, concerns of a gas station, I don't know anything of that business either, but I'm sure open to look for it. Or look, you know, but I think anything, I've really come to the conclusion, just let's wait till we get.
Yeah.
That roundabout figured out.
Which is, yeah, fair.
My input on the gas station thing is, is without a doubt, every one of these people are going to use it. I don't, I don't, I personally don't see anything wrong with driving, you can drive five, six minutes anywhere in the city and get gas.
Yes.
So to me, it's not that big a deal, but.
Luckily, that's an outlot right now.
It's an outlot and we're. But I was just wondering from a density, and I didn't even want to bring it up, but I was thinking if an assisted living thing, if that comes as density, then you could potentially widen some, you know, get rid of some of the other lots to widen them out to make Scott happy, but still hit the density that we need and.
Whether I'm happy or not, if it's three to two.
Councilor Van Assen, so they have, he'd have to plat that on the board to count against this right now, and currently that's all just an outlot, so.
Okay.
And, and so to be honest, I, I mean, I just was transparent, right? I've been here with a bunch of concept plans versus one. You know, let's just say the roundabout comes in there and there's nothing really wants to market, I'm probably going to come here and ask for houses on it.
Yeah, yeah. But it's not currently counting, so one way or the, I guess that was my question, one way or another, no matter what happens, it would not affect the other density.
Yeah, those acres weren't put in there.
Got it, got it. Thank you for that.
Anybody got any other questions? I think I'm out.
Trying to pick up some time, aren't you?
So, probably, so we'd be good, so I, I just figured parks stays, seven and a half foot setbacks. I mean, that's where it is on everything else.
I can live with that, but I can't do, if it's four to one, so be it, whatever, it doesn't bother me.
I'm catering, I'm probably good.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other question? Thanks.
Okay.
We're back on schedule.
Yeah, I was going to say.
We're still twenty minutes behind. We're going to fix that up at the end, though.
What was the twenty minutes we lost in the math here?
Oh, that's right.
Mayor of the council tonight, the approval of the term sheet for Parkway neighborhood, we are grabbing, um, Jason Arzold from LR, I think he's in the conference room.
Yes, he's here, I saw him.
Can, can, the bottom line is, it, what we talked about last time, looks like it's, it's exactly what.
I will, uh, I'll have Jason Arzold explain, but essentially, yes.
Yeah, cool.
Ready for you? Good evening, uh, mayor, members of the council, sorry, we were back there chatting, we didn't know how long that last item was going to take, so apologize for the delay. Well, we're here again to talk just briefly about the Parkway neighborhood apartments. Site plan is, is shown here, so I think everyone's familiar with where this is located and what's being proposed, but we'll talk in a little more detail about that as we run through here. Uh, just to kind of orient you here, just wanted to talk a little about where we've been, kind of how we got to where we are, uh, some of the things that we talked about that we would come back to you with, uh, and then what, what's on here for discussion tonight really is what's called the term sheet, which is really an outline for an eventual agreement with the developer related to the tax abatement that we've been discussing. So just, uh, just to revisit here, uh, we talked about the fact that this is a project that, uh, you know, isn't financially feasible right now, uh, for, for a number of reasons, but primarily driven by the need for, um, uh, significant infrastructure to this site. And what had been discussed initially was forgiveness of some city fees and that that wasn't going to be enough to get it all the way to financial feasibility, and so, uh, we began to talk about other alternatives. Uh, and then December, uh, we talked with you all about some ideas related to that, driven primarily by adding some pay-as-you-go tax abatement to the mix in order to make this project financially feasible. And if you recall after that discussion, the direction from you all was to go back and negotiate, uh, some form of a pay-as-you-go tax abatement with the developer that would supplement those fee waivers, make the project financially feasible, but that would, it would be subject to additional detailed, uh, financial analysis, and that we would come back to you all with all those details, uh, for you to look at and consider. So that's kind of where we're at tonight. Uh, we went back and did that analysis, uh, which confirmed that we could support up to nine years of tax abatement, which would total about one point nine million of present value, so in today's dollars. Same thing as we discussed previously, is that only seventy-five percent of the increased taxes would be directed to that abatement payment, twenty-five percent would still be retained by the city to cover ongoing operational costs that you might see coming from this project. And then because it's pay-as-you-go, nothing comes upfront from the city, the developer has to go out and raise those dollars on its own, uh, and use the abatement payments to pay back the loan that they get in order to do that. And if those abatement, uh, payments to them aren't enough to pay out that total assistance, then the city doesn't make up that shortfall. So that's the concept that was discussed, um, you know, that's what, what we'll talk a little more detail about. And in this case, uh, because tax abatement, every jurisdiction needs to, uh, agree to participate, uh, we're only talking about the city's portion of the taxes when we talk about this tax abatement, not the county, not the school. Questions about that before we dive in? All right, so as you recall, uh, what we discussed was that we would first, uh, well, first, we had, we had already conducted a pro forma analysis, which is really just looking at all the developers' numbers and projections for the project. Uh, we had to dig in a little deeper on that to come to an actual abatement number, uh, and take into consideration some of the changes that had been made with the project, the unit counts, the phasing, things like that. Uh, so we went back and did all of that. You have in your packet this evening our memorandum, which is about a three-page memo that summarizes our detailed findings as it relates to that analysis. And, uh, but as I say, at the end of the day, uh, basically, uh, what we're looking at is that the project costs that were represented, the expenses that they anticipate going forward, how the project was being financed meets industry standards. It meets the things that we would expect to see when we look at a project like this, and that's really the first thing that we're looking for, uh, because if those things are overstated, then it can show a greater need for assistance, so we want to make sure that that isn't, isn't happening. Uh, the projected rents here, uh, are consistent with rents for other projects in the market, and we also have a, a market study that was, um, you know, done by a third party for this project, uh, Maxfield Research, who's a reputable market research firm, and so the rents here are consistent with that market study as well. And then when we look at that, we say, okay, well, if this project has to absorb all of the costs of the new roadway, how does that impact the return on investment? Because that's fundamentally what this is about. The developer's saying that, you know, if we have to pay for all those costs of the road, the project does not generate enough of a return on investment, and we can't attract investors to the project. And so we're looking at, in this case, a yield on cost metric that is just simply taking the project's net operating income and dividing it by the total development cost, and that's a very common metric that multifamily developers use. We focus specifically on that one because that is a metric that is measured before debt service, and right now we are in a, uh, kind of a, a high interest rate environment, which we don't anticipate will stay that way forever. And often what will happen is that, you know, developers will refinance out of those higher interest rate mortgages into something lower, so we're trying to take that out of this equation and really just focus on that headline number, which is the net operating income. And generally, uh, what we're seeing is that, you know, uh, if a project is, uh, going to warrant city assistance, that that should be less than seven percent. If it starts to exceed seven percent, then, then it should be feasible in the marketplace without really any city assistance at all. And so when we look at this, we calculate that's approximately six percent on average over a nine-year term, so we average out, so, so in the early years it's, it's lower, and then the later years it's higher, but on average, it's only getting to six percent. And so what that tells us is that there's some assistance that's warranted there. Uh, and then with the nine years of assistance, we're calculating that's about six point five percent on average, so still not quite to that seven, but getting closer, uh, to the amounts that we're talking about. So that includes the fee forgiveness and, uh, the abatement. And you see, it doesn't move the needle very much here, but we're talking about a hundred and fourteen million dollar project, uh, so, you know, these dollars relative to what we're talking about here, don't move the needle all that, all that much. So that's really where we landed, you know, all in together. What it looks like is that, uh, we talked about, you saw this previously, one point nine million, the way that works out is just these payments here, uh, this is the actual calculated abatement if all three phases are built, uh, and it ramps up over time, and it would take that nine years, as I mentioned, to repay, uh, a one point nine million dollar note at six point two five percent interest. And again, that's splitting the, the, uh, the abatements twenty-five to the city, seventy-five percent to the developer, and then after nine years, those payments would stop. So that's, uh, where we ended with, with the particular, um, uh, abatement piece of this, and then what you have then also in your packet is that all has been committed to what we call a term sheet, and again, that is just an outline of what an eventual agreement would look like with this developer, uh, that would be a more of a binding agreement. This is not a, this term sheet is not a binding agreement, but it at least gives you a sense of where, what an agreement would look like when it comes back, at least for the pertinent deal points. And so what that term sheet says is that the developer's obligated to construct the units of housing four hundred and fifty-two in three phases, that they will pay for and construct all necessary infrastructure, uh, that's all identified within the city's separate development agreement, so within their plat and the, and the attached development agreement with that, they'll be obligated to do these things, uh, that the city then will provide the one point nine million Pago tax abatement, and that the way, way fees that have always been under discussion for phases one and two are still included as part of that, uh, and also evidenced in that city development agreement, and those total three point four eight million. Uh, there is a provision in that term sheet that the developer covers the city's expenses as it relates to this whole abatement transaction, so the cost of doing analysis that, that's been undertaken, uh, legal time as it relates to the actual drafting of the agreement, those sorts of things are to be covered by the developer. And then we talked a little bit about this, but that future agreement would also include a lookback provision, uh, and just briefly, again, what that is, is, uh, because we've done all this on projections, and we all know that those are going to change, what a lookback provision allows us to do is to look at the project once it's done, built and operational, and if the return on investment there is higher than what was anticipated because either costs were less or rents were higher, whatever the case may be, it provides for an opportunity to reduce the city's payments of, of abatement over that nine-year period of time. So that will be built into the agreement as well.
And is that arbitrated? How, how, how does that happen? Because I'm guessing it's, it's not, not all on the city to just say, well, we've decided you're always too good.
Yeah, it's a good question, mayor, the members of the council. So what happens is if the, the agreement spells out when and how that lookback, uh, exercise will be conducted. So it's in, it, it says when, so for example, when the project reaches stabilization, that triggers the calculation, and then the agreement will spell out exactly how the calculation is made, will be projecting a yield on cost, just like we did with the pro forma analysis, but instead of doing it on projections, will be doing it starting with real numbers and projecting for, through those nine years. And the agreement will spell that out, there'll be an exhibit that even details how those calculations will be made, and all of that will be included in that agreement. So it's all set at the outset, um, and, and defined as to how it will work.
Okay. So it's pretty quantified, so there's, there's no arguing on either side.
There, there are sometimes arguments.
So that gets to my point, like who decides those?
Well, I mean, I, you know, there, a court ultimately, I mean, I, yeah, if there was a real dispute that, that rose to that, to that level, but I would say that, uh, because of, uh, many, many years of experience with the language in these lookback provisions, I think we got them to a place where.
They're solid.
They're pretty solid, yeah. But I don't want to give you the idea that, you know, it's, it's a guarantee that nothing could happen or that there couldn't be a challenge to it, but they're pretty well laid out, pretty well spelled out in, in, in black and white, and then even with those exhibits that I mentioned, very clear about what the intent and how they're supposed to be, uh, administered.
So there's, there would be a number in there, the, the expected ROI, like you've got on, on your information.
Yes.
And then the lookback agreement would say, you're, you're too far above that.
Yep.
And, and so we would like to make a change to this Pago note or, or the abatement piece of it, I guess whichever piece we control. What does that look like typically? I mean, if it's six percent to seven and a half, then triggers, trigger an adjustment or, I mean, that's got to be spelled out, otherwise.
It will be, yeah, and we'll negotiate what that threshold is, we haven't defined that specifically yet. Typically what happens when we do these is that we go through the exercise and, uh, you know, the, the lookback isn't triggered often, right? Because the cost came in higher or the rents weren't as high, but at the end of the day, when we do it, we do go through the calculation, often we just confirm that, yes, the projected return on investment is actually at or below what was anticipated, and therefore we don't need to do the calculation. But, uh, there will be a specified rate of return in there, and we would be projecting to that point, and if we happen to project that we're going to exceed it, again, these are still future-looking projections, we're doing them at year three and trying to predict what happens in year nine by, by projecting those actual figures. And if we project an overage, then what happens is we reduce the payments down to where we get to that percentage threshold, and then we issue a new note of a, of a lower amount And then we issue a new note of a lower amount, is what happens. So then theoretically, you pay it off more quickly. So perhaps instead of nine years, maybe it's six, or something like that. So that's how it goes.
Okay. I think, yeah, for me, I think that's an important provision, because the whole concept of this tax abatement sort of came at 11th hour to us. And, you know, I think that we, we're owed that kind of protection, I guess, that if it can be paid off quicker or reduced somehow, that that's fair.
And Mayor, members of the council, I would agree that that's, and this is included in, you know, virtually all agreements at this point. The idea being that if the project didn't need the public assistance, it shouldn't have it, right? So we try to do that on the front end as best we can, but we know circumstances change, and so we have the opportunity here to look at it again. Yeah, so that's the term sheet. In terms of next steps, and I'm still happy to answer any questions that you have here, there would be a need to draft then that formal tax abatement agreement that would just be premised on this term sheet with all the key points that are contained within that. And then, as we discussed before, your role in that then is to hold a public hearing on the abatement, pass a resolution approving the abatement, and the abatement agreement. And that can all happen at one meeting, but it does require publication of notice of the hearing and things of that nature. So I think right now, I think that's tentatively planned for March 25th, 2025, and I think that's the same night that there's other actions, land use related, on this project. And so I think there's the thought that those would come together at the same time. So if that happens then on the 25th, that is the end of the council's role in terms of approving that tax abatement, then the developer has to actually go out and perform, right? Do all the things they said they were going to do. And if that happens, then the abatement note would be issued to the developer, and then those payments, it's an administrative function that those happen then on a semi-annual basis that I mentioned. So that's how ultimately that would work. But, and I'll stop there, but if there's any questions, again, I'm certainly happy to answer those.
So I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for you or staff. So one of the things is that the road is so expensive, and that's what's costing so much money. What if we built the road? And, like, can we build the road for cheaper and then not have to do the tax abatement? Or is that an option?
Same specs.
So, I'll tell you something, I think we've done some research on building that. I don't think we'd ever want to build the full road.
No, but at least a portion of it maybe?
We could build a portion of it. I think some preliminary talks have been done by Jason Quisberg. I don't remember where the numbers are, 3.5?
It's probably not any cheaper for the city to build it.
Okay.
I mean, we build it to the same standards, we'd require they design it the same that we would.
Yeah.
It could be structured differently, though. There would be no abatement then involved in the process. There would be no, you know, there'd be smaller fee forgiveness. Obviously, the developer wouldn't have to construct nearly as much, either so the financial burden would be off that person. I think it's really a question on risk that the city's willing to do. Is it more, because there is risk if we put a roadway in without any guarantees that anything's built there.
Roadway to nowhere.
Could be a roadway to nowhere for, I don't think it would be very long again, but we don't have any guarantees. So it's really more or less the city's risk. There, if the council's interested in doing that, we can most certainly have the conversation with the developer. But I think we've had a preliminary conversation, and from what I understood, it seemed like it, he didn't really love that idea. But I don't want to speak for him, he's not here.
I was just curious.
Yep. So it's a great question.
Any other questions? Sounds like we're good.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. We need a break? Anybody? All right, we can take a five-minute recess.
Any discussion? Holders in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Holders opposed, say no.
You're good.
Good.
I listened to the planning commission.
Great job, he had all this information for you. Sixteen slides.
Piece of cake.
Could've sent you home three hours ago.
Oh, no, he's not done yet.
No, I know.
Marty, you won't be so easy.
No.
You're not going to be so easy.
Thanks very much for that. I appreciate it. Adam, yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item, before you tonight, is to award the contract for the L.C. Stevens Master Plan. Some time ago, the council asked me to go out for RFP to extend the master plan that we have and revise it, to look at what, we haven't got phased in yet. We put out the RFP in December, we got six responses. From there, myself and John went through the original six and looked at them through the criteria of the RFP, and eliminated three of those to make three finalists for the park commission to consider. The three finalists presented to the park commission at their last meeting. From there, they selected two finalists. The MSA was one of the finalists, and Damon Farber were the other finalists. The idea originally was to have them present to you guys tonight, and then you can make your decision for the award. I'm not sure, we're 10 minutes on the agenda, if that's what you guys want to do, or how you want to go forward with this. We do have Damon Farber online, we have MSA in the audience and online, if you want to do a question-and-answer session with that. MSA were the number-one pick from the park commission, Damon Farber were the second choice.
Yeah, Mayor and members of the council, I think both, when we had talked to both, and all of the applicants when they first said, we kind of preferred to a presentation and a Q&amp;A. Knowing how much was on the agenda, we had to adjust that. So again, we'll leave you with that of what the council may want to do, but do want to provide that to the council for information that we had presented to them of Q&amp;A and presentation.
You guys want a presentation, or just...
Can they be fast?
Q&amp;A.
Quick, to the point?
What do you mean, what's fast? I guess...
Yeah, I'd be good with a, I'm good with just question and answer, but it's up to you.
Question and answer, I mean, I'll be okay.
Okay.
I'm not sure where I want to go. I tell you what, I got nothing good to say, so I won't say nothing.
I want to hear it all.
I don't need the presentation.
I don't. Okay, so what questions do we have?
Two of the questions for.
Well, you're standing there, so I'll ask you.
Can you, can you explain, so you said the Parks Commission had a first choice and a second choice?
Correct.
What, can you summarize why they had a first, like, what made them the first choice?
I can do better. I have a member of the park commission here.
Member of the Parks Commission, can you come forward?
He's not only a member, he's a chair.
The chair of the Parks Commission.
Right.
Sorry, we have not officially met yet, so I did not recognize you. But can you summarize why you, why they were your first, right, the one firm was your first choice, and the other firm was your second choice?
Name and address.
Name and address.
Dave Peckel, 13161 Zandeburg, also park chair. Mayor, council members, it was great to have all three presentations. What we boiled it down to was, it's something extra to have somebody in the room presenting. So that's why the top two were picked off of that. We chose MSA as number one because we're already working with them on the River project, already been familiar with the vendor, understanding them, having their relationship built. We figured it would help assist things along.
But otherwise, you think they would both do a great job? It's just that that existing relationship is always nice to work with someone that you already know that you can work well with.
Correct.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. That was my big question.
So there was a substantial difference in fee between the top two picks. Why do you feel like MSA, or what, some of the things you said have value, for sure. But is there, are there additional services? Are there things happening that help justify that difference in fee, I guess, is what I'm asking?
We didn't focus on fees because it wasn't necessarily an apples-to-apples measurement. I would ask you to ask them to explain their fee structure, which you'll find out if some things are missing from others, they didn't think they needed it, or they had previous experience in staffing already available to do it versus bringing in a third party to do it.
So it's kind of a different, different product.
Correct.
Yeah, one didn't have some engineering included.
Exactly.
The cheaper one didn't have some of the engineering included. What I preferred over the cheaper one was, and maybe this can still happen, the cheaper one had a 10-week turnaround on designing this park. Me personally, we are dragging our feet in this park, and it's just been driving me crazy. Spend more time talking about it than, I'll be dead before it's built. I mean, I just, it drives me nuts.
You keep eating cookies, and you will be.
There's cookies. So anyway, that's kind of where that is at. Glad you guys go. I just have a hard time with this whole thing. I mean, we haven't even, as a park commission and a council, we haven't talked about, what do you want to see in that park? I drew a plan of this park about six months ago, and nobody's seen it. It got buried, and I'm sure it's in the garbage can by now.
And I think that once the contract is awarded, that's when we can define the scope of work that we want to see as part of this project. I think that would be near the time that we can define all that stuff.
That's not going to happen. You're going to tell them what you want, and that's what's going to happen.
Totally driven by you guys, you made the decisions.
Well, I can certainly see the synergy between this and the water trail work. It makes sense to continue with, or expand the scope of the one contractor rather than bringing essentially a third into the mix.
I'm a big fan of making them sell themselves, too. You know, give them three minutes, give me your best pitch, and go from there.
Yeah, three minutes is elevator pitch.
We can do that. We have people online, that's what the council wants to do.
Right in, go for it.
Is that what you want, that the council wants to do, three-minute elevator pitch?
I don't care. I mean, these guys are going to wake up their mind and...
It's your support, that's what's that you're going to do.
I personally would rather spend the $60,000 bucks on amenities in the park, but that's me. I have a hard time with somebody telling me what to do.
One of the things that's been a big driver for the water trails was, and MSA brought this to the table early in that process, was the ability to attract other interested parties. National Park Service and DNR and Three Rivers and so on have all come to the table now on that, on that part of the project. Do we think there's any potential for that, given their expertise to do that with this park?
The way they explained it to us that night, yes.
I'm sure that there's something that River's can get into, in that part, that they would look at it. Okay. Well, we get to the point where we're... Well, will we get to the point where we're? You just don't want to hear the three-minute spiel, don't you?
I kind of want to hear the three-minute spiel from both groups, both.
Okay, well, let's do that.
But I'm only one of fours, of fives.
Well.
Sure, let's do that.
Okay. Come on up, people who are here, can they start?
Would you prefer to have MSA first or?
I guess it really doesn't matter at this stage.
Yeah. We, yeah, we'll have MSA up first just because they're in the room and then.
There's a minute each, okay?
Yeah, I guess we can press some of the slides. No, this is a summary of the longer one. You got three minutes, make it good.
No pressure.
I'll run you up, but once you're on, you're on.
All right.
We have.
I gotta go.
We have Rain up a little higher.
Yeah, so Rain Gardner, I think you've all met her before with the Water Trails project. She's online, she was busy with a corporate meeting tonight, so she couldn't make it with us. We overwhelmed the park board last meeting because we all showed up. But this is the core team. I'm Dan Williams, I'm a landscape architect and so I'd be project manager on the project. And then I'll just go through everybody real quick.
You could probably just skip that. Why should we pick you?
Why should you pick us? Okay, so yes, there is that continuity with all the projects. One of the things that MSA offers and we talked to the park board about is that we have a funding team. We're one of the few engineering firms that have a funding team. So we'll go through looking at the project and identifying funding sources. So that's where we talk about the water course. That's what we did with the water course. So we know these different funds out there for different types of amenities.
And that came from our conversations with the stakeholders, as mentioned by the council member. And we've scoped a pretty significant amount of community engagement events that might have contributed, that definitely contributed to the higher fee that we've proposed for this project. We have a scope for each phase, open house, pop-up events, meeting people where they are. This is the city's plan, not our plan. We have the technical expertise with our engineering team, our LA team, the planning team, to bring the vision to life. But it's what your community members want, it's what your users want. And so we really scoped that significantly in our approach. That all leads to stakeholder discussions, community member discussions that might know more stakeholders for us to have those conversations with that then results in potential funding sources like the Water Trail project did.
And as Marty mentioned, usually the kickoff meeting, that's when we establish an actual timeline. We just kind of throw something at the board at first because we're trying to figure out what you want to do and how much you want to accomplish. So in the kickoff meeting, we can fine tune that based on what the community wants to do, especially on the public engagement side. So we can, we can shorten that down. But we are working on the boat launch too at LC Stevens. Christian, he is on the phone as well. He's a project manager for this project. So one of the things that we're doing with Marty is is we're keeping him up to date with biweekly reports. Christian's already started that with this project. We're working on the boat launch with DNR, doing the same thing. And so Christian and myself will be keeping Marty up to date biweekly on all these projects and how they're progressing.
I think, lastly, we can just touch on our implementation. We are a full-service engineering fir-, or full-service municipal firm. We have engineers, funding team, architects, all of the board. We can bring your project from vision through completion.
Yeah, so we've got MEPs, so we've got plumbing, electric, water, structural engineers, architects, it's one-stop shop.
Oh, nice.
So we can build.
So we're not gonna have a ton of subcontractors?
Correct.
Okay.
We're one-stop shop.
Can we get in at three minutes?
Yes. You technically have 20 seconds, any less. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Pause for dramatic effect.
Who is? We won't count this against their three minutes, though.
I don't think they're here. And that's a resident, but I don't know.
There you go.
That's helpful.
Yeah, here's three minutes.
Let's save those three.
You're welcome.
Okay, where do we want to go? Motion, second, if we're gonna work.
How you want me to word this?
I'll make a motion to accept the MSA proposal.
I'll second.
Need more discussion? Holders in favor, say aye.
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 The guy who does funding, so other people will pay for that extra.
I said aye.
You said it so sad.
Any needs?
No pergos. Move me out the door if you give me a pergla.
Okay, that passes five to zero and we can move on.
Burn that damn thing up.
You can't burn the pergola because I think it's fiberglass.
Dennis is already tired.
Round two. Good evening, Mayor and council, once again. The item in front of you is approval to put out to bid for the 22, 24 Park Improvement Project. Paul Kangas has been working on this. He recently presented the 90% plans to the park commission. He's since about those. You have a 95% set of plans in your packet today. Paul's here to talk you through and ask, answer any questions. What we're looking to do is just get this out to bid so we can get the, the project moving this year.
Good evening. Three of the five of you are well acquainted with me. Paul Kangas, 18601, 152nd Avenue in Dayton. Tonight is a simple request. It is to advertise for the bidding of the 2024 Park Improvement Project consisting of three different park sites, Phase 3 of LC Stevens, what we call PSA 21, which certainly needs a new home, but basically the area around Sundance, the north half of the area, north and east of Sundance, and a small improvement at Ione Gardens. The packet that you have had the updated cost estimate. The highlights in green are confirmed current project amounts. The items highlighted in red are things that I still need from the civil engineer. We got the irrigation plan over the weekend, waiting on the civil engineering drawings, hoping to have that this week. The current plan is to put these on the street on Monday or as early as possible next week with a potential bid date of March 27. And that would be approved at your first meeting in April. So I'll stand for questions. No pretty presentations at this point. It's all construction documents and cost estimates, which will get turned into the bid form. You will note, one of the items I did include in your packet was a list of ad alternates. And that's a strategic thing that I do for every project, hoping that bids come in good and solid and high value. We use ad alternates to add elements that you deem to be worthy of that extra cost. But we're not bound to include them as part of the base bid. So it's strategic, but it helps us make sure that we can enter into a bid. We had really good bid data from 2022, when the 2021 Parks Improvement Package was bid. What I can't tell you is how much the current market and inflation has impacted those. We always take our best guess. I've got a strong track record of being within 3% to 5% of my estimates, typically on the high side, on purpose. But with any luck, we'll hit the numbers that we're close to and you'll have to make some hard decisions from there, so. Any questions I can answer for you tonight? You're not bound to any contract tonight. It's just an opportunity to go out for bid and to go through the public bidding process, which is a significant work effort.
I don't really have any questions or guesses. Just some comments to me looking at these plans, the whole thing from page 168 to, to the whole thing. For me, very hard to follow. I don't need elevation changes and all that. There is no picture of, in here of the whole, the whole plan, no aerial. It goes from shelter at the 21 area to all of a sudden, three pages later, we're talking about a shelter at Stevens Park. It's all over the place, however this thing was put together. But I mean, we've been talking about it long enough that I kind of follow it. And I don't know that the numbers have changed. I think the 21 park area has been right around a million bucks for the, since the get-go. The one issue that I have with it, Paul, is some of the numbers that you have in here, concrete at 18 bucks a square foot, that's probably two and a half times what a five-minute phone call today, you can get it for 11 bucks, all day long.
You're welcome to invite those contractors to bid the project, Scott.
And that's where I'm going with this. To me, some of these numbers are way out of line. Marty, you were given a quote from an individual on a 20 by 30 building for about 45,000 bucks.
Which one was that?
Sean.
That came in out. One that we discussed at the public workshop.
Yeah.
I think that when.
That wasn't built, that was.
No, it wasn't built. It was 120,000, I think that Scott, he revised it to with the bigger building. I think 40,000 was the basic building, but not what we were looking at that time.
So to me, some of these things, I think we need to kick some of these out and have a, get our own subcontractor to bid on them because the numbers, to me, are just way out of line.
So through the general contracting process, they will get multiple bids and we can even ask to see those multiple bids to prove that you're getting good values. But this is not my first rodeo and I've gone through this. I have a detailed comparison of the bid results from 2022. I do a synthesis for every bid result. I put low bid, I put averages, I put our previous estimate and be able to compare that. And then we adjust for inflation depending on how many years old that data is. So I think you would be shocked to see what construction prices have done. It's based on real data. I hope I'm wrong. I hope you get lower dollars.
I made the phone call this morning on three of these items and they're, just the concrete alone on the 4,500 square feet of concrete, I can save 30,000 bucks by making a phone call. Now, that's whether or not we're gonna have that guy do it. I mean, what I'm saying before, in the past, what we've, what we've used is people that used to set up and all of a sudden.
I don't think that, they're not hand-selected by us, they're on bids from contractors.
I understand that. I get that.
I'm not, I'm not sure that you are getting that because you can make a call to some local guy that does concrete and that's not based on working through a general contractor in a true public bid environment. Those numbers are different.
That's where I'm going with it, the general. My point is, the general contractor's getting a piece, the contractor, everybody in line is getting a piece where we could go and get our own guy. Marty would have to supervise the guy maybe, but we're gonna save a ton of money. And I know you guys don't care because the public pays for it.
I do care. I'm shocked that you just spent $60,000 on a proposal that I didn't apply for and thought was unnecessary. So you get a little bit of a disconnect between what you want to pay for versus what you can pay for. And that's been a problem at LC Stevens all along. The next project is a $3 million building. You know, an event center. There's, there's very little room left on that park, so. I, I've made my opinion clear. I didn't propose on the project for a reason. The frustration level that I have is high. So I'm happy to share my thoughts. We can do it offline if you wish, but you're questioning 30-plus years of experience in a public bid environment. I think that's inappropriate.
Then why are we here?
To ask you to go to bid.
Why are we to go to bid? I don't have a problem with that.
You're here to review and, and allow the project to go up to bid.
I guess I just took a little bit of umbrage with your, I've got 30 years' experience thing. Because I, I do have some frustrations with some of the stuff that we've seen too. It isn't necessarily what you're doing, it's some of the choices we make. The pergola, we made a joke about that, but the pergola.
The pergola was Phase 1, it was 10 years ago.
Yep. Does that, does that matter? It was 20 grand for that 12-by-12 pergola.
22.
The blocks, the limestone, that is cracking somehow. Go look at those blocks. And I'm telling you, it's like they're manufactured. They're cracking an inch below the, it's just some of the stuff we look at and say, what's going on? And, and I think that's some of what you're hearing. So I wouldn't, you know, necessarily personalize it, but it's frustrating because there's only a few people that bid on these things, a few outfits, because there's only a few outfits that can do them all. But there's, there's just a lot of, you know, individual pieces we look at and we just scratch our heads and say, how is it possible that it costs that much? And maybe in some cases, it really does and, and. But even, you know, even before, I mean, that, even before COVID, we've seen a lot of that stuff. So I, I don't doubt that, that that really spiked prices. It's just some of the stuff, I don't know. I have questions.
Well, the, the reason that PSA 21 is almost a million dollars now, you've added irrigation and you've added parking. Those features have never been included in the neighborhood parks before. You've added now irrigation to Hidden Hills and portions of River Hills, so we've added scope. So a park that was, let's see, Hidden Hills was like 525, 540, three years ago. And now we're looking at nine-something. But a quarter of a million of that is irrigation and parking. So costs have gone up and you're talking five-inch concrete, not four.
Why is that, by the way? I noticed that, why is that, five-inch?
Just better durability, you know? We want these to be there for a long time and that extra inch adds a significant length to the structural integrity of the concrete. It's not that it won't crack, it's just not going to break up.
I don't mind going for bids. I mean, I'll make a motion if we go for a bid, but I'm gonna scrutinize the bid when it comes. That's me.
See, many of you also have any questions?
I'm going to scrutinize them, Scott. I do a very detailed synthesis. I will share with you any information you want as to where my numbers come from. I've, I think I've proven over the years to be a very good steward of the dollars that the city of Dayton has spent on the park. You might not like the pergola, but that is a very prominent location.
I don't like $18 a square foot on this current bid that we just got today.
Okay, and if it comes in at 16?
I still don't like it.
I don't like it either.
I know a guy that'll do it from between 11 and 12.
But you have to pay somebody to manage that process. So either Marty has to do it or you have to pay me to do it and that's not an insignificant amount of time and money.
Well, it's not worth $6, $8 a square foot to me to, to pay you to do it.
If you do it on every single line item, it absolutely is. You know, the general contractor will mark it up, what, 10%? Hopefully, 10%?
I don't think you can stay in business at 10% markup.
Clear profit at 10, that would probably be the minimum. This is a competitive bid environment. That's part of the challenge of municipal projects is we have to go through a very rigid process, right? We have to publicly advertise, we have to take public bids, we have to watch things differently than we would in a private build scenario. I absolutely agree, it could be done cheaper in a negotiated contract, but there's rules about that. You can't do it.
Well, to me, on another item, the grill, $1,200 grill, they're 350 bucks. Somebody's got to put it in the ground and it's not worth that difference to me.
Okay.
Public works can stick it in the ground and the guy can pour in the cement, can put the cementer on it after it's sitting in the ground.
Marty and I did talk about that and he has concerns about staffing and the ability to do that in a timely fashion, so. I'm happy to pull it out.
I'll second the motion to go out for bid.
Who motion?
Sorry, I missed that.
Scott.
Scott.
I missed it, sorry.
Any more questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved, go out for bid.
Pre-bid meeting on the 18th, that's when contractors ask questions with the goal of bidding on the 27th. And it's possible that could get deflected a week or so, but I'll work with Marty on the announcement before it goes out on the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item N, parking regulations.
All right, do the same thing you did last night.
9:30, 9:30.
No, because I'm, it's not going to be an easy yes for me, I'll say that.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight you're asked to consider ordinance 2025-04, amending the residential parking surfacing and location regulations. I'll just note that, and to preface this, the agenda mentioned, or the title of the agenda item was approval of an ordinance. The planning commission did unanimously recommend denial, so I just want to bring that up in relation to what you'd normally seen on the cover page, so. This stems from a conversation that they opened for him, and at a December meeting, a resident received a violation related to him parking boat trailers and other items of the like in his backyard. I believe that he had a, a number of three of them. Currently, the surfacing for driveways and parking areas reads as followed here on the presentation. All parking areas shall be surfaced with concrete or bituminous material so as to be dust-free. And I will just note that existing, there is no provisions regarding location of parking areas except regarding easements and property line setbacks.
Before we move on, I just had a question.
Sure.
And I don't think it was on this page, but it's related to the concrete and bituminous.
Yeah.
I've seen a lot of driveways with brick, or, I mean, that doesn't fall into this. Why, why is it that we don't?
Improve service.
That's not what that says.
I would say.
I agree.
I would say you both are correct, that if they've, they've used pavers in a brick-style format for driveways or something of the like, that would not fall under the lines of surface with concrete or bituminous material.
Yeah, and it, it isn't necessarily related to this, other than, I just thought it was odd we don't allow dri, or, we do allow them because there's a lot of houses that have them, but.
Sure.
Technically, they're not allowed.
Yeah, and I will say.
Somewhere in the, related to commercial uses, the, the pavers were mentioned in there as a, as a separate approval item, but I didn't, I didn't overlook the number that was on.
Oh, I guess I.
Was that egg?
But it's not in this context, I'm just.
Right.
But it is mentioned in another, another type of use.
Yeah, I very.
That it could be approved.
Yeah, I've.
Would you like to add pavers to the concrete and bituminous?
We already have them. I have no problem with pavers in the driveway. But we have to have another open, another ordinance change.
Well, this is it.
No, I'm talking about the regular driveway thing.
Yeah, and that, that.
I'm not too worried about this.
Sure. I will say that that could be incorporated into an ordinance amendment if it were motion to approve tonight, just to note that. And I guess while we're on the topic of pavers, I will say that because this language is currently so vague, residents kind of have done a workaround or a loophole to the language where they would have travel trailers or things of the like parked in their backyards and get a notice that it's on a, on their grass, and it can't be located on their grass. So they would go out there and place concrete pavers underneath the parking area.
Okay.
And whether that be just the, the specific tire areas where they're located, staff has taken the position that this language is too vague to say that concrete pavers doesn't fall underneath this guideline, so.
Okay, because it's concrete.
Yes, I just wanted to bring that up as well, so.
Yep, I don't doubt that. It's a hard, yep.
Well, and the people who, who are, who are bringing forth some of these concerns about parking, it's not about the material vehicles are parked on, it's that they're an eyesore to their neighborhoods. And requiring the surface, like, making an adjustment to what surface they're on does not address the underlying issue of it's an eyesore in my neighborhood. The issue there is screening. We need to have better screening for these things. What they're actually parked on doesn't matter. So I think that was kind of the big takeaway for why the planning, at least, that was my takeaway from the planning commission's conversation of like, this isn't addressing the ultimate need, so why do this? So I'd rather, I don't care about what surface they're parked on because it's just, it's ridiculous. It's just gonna, if it's about protecting the environment, as soon as it rains, it's just gonna wash off your concrete into your grass anyways, like, it's not saving anything. It's gonna be like, so mud versus concrete, how, that's your, that's your problem for in your own house, right? But the screening is an, is an issue. So for me, I, I don't care about these changes, one way or the other. What I would like to see is some language about screening being requirement, being a requirement of some sort. But no one's, like, I haven't done any homework on that. I don't know if other cities have that, so like, I'm not prepared with language, like, I would like to add this language in preparation, but.
I agree with you. I think that, you know, what they're parked on is not, not the real issue that anybody's too concerned about, except that, you know, today, we, we seem to require it, and it doesn't seem necessary. But the, the issue is, what's the, what's the right number of things to have parked in, in your yard? Is it, do we have, is there any number that's, that's correct? Is it any of our business? Is it, you know, is it one, is it five?
And to me, it goes to screening. If I can't see it, I don't really care, right? Like, if I can't see what's back there, park, if you want seven different junked things, fine, I don't care, I can't see it.
So definitely junked things, though, like.
No, but like, at a certain point, why do you have, like.
I mean, I gotta incriminate myself, but I don't, don't come for me. I have a boat next to my garage, it's definitely a working great boat.
Which is fine.
And I asked my neighbor last night, I'm like, "Do you mind that you see it?" He goes, "No, not at all, it's a boat, it's on, next to your garage."
What kind of screening are you talking about?
Well, and I think, I mean, I mean, that goes to the size and the, the location, right? Like, there's a certain amount of, and, and that goes to one boat, sure, no big deal, but there are people who have like five or six boats, and then you start getting into like, are they your boats, or are they some, like, does one person have that many boats, or are you destroying someone else's boats?
I, I hear you there. Like, I don't think you should have had five, but.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, I mean, they're not, the, the ordinance says you can't do that.
Yeah, right. And people are doing it. Inoperable, right?
Maybe. Yes, I, I don't doubt that, but I mean, that, that gets at the number, I guess.
Okay.
Personally, I think, well, for, I mean, the thing was broken into less than half an acre and more. As I took it, less than half an acre was, you could have one on the side and one in the back.
Provided you can meet the side yard setback, yeah, which is five feet.
Yeah. And then for the about five acres, or half an acre, it was, you, you, it just, both of these took care of the surface nonsense, and then you could still have one on the side of the garage, and then, I don't know, I don't think there was a limit on the back, but.
There was not a limit, yeah, that's correct.
And I think you said in there somewhere that Champlin doesn't have any of these.
That is correct. The Champlin does not have any limitations related to it, just more of locations, and if you're going to have it in that location, here's the surfaces that would be approved for that.
Okay.
So I think that in regards to the side yard, whether it's adjacent to a garage or not, I think if you park a boat in your side yard adjacent to the garage, it's got to be on a extension of the driveway or a parking pad or something like that.
Why was, what did next to the garage have to do with anything?
Oh, it was just to really avoid the posi, the placement of trailers and boats, recreational vehicles on the living side of the house. So you're kind of blocking that aesthetic appeal of the, the front of the house, whereas you have it adjacent to the side, or the garage side, that at least provides that distinction.
For your house, but not your neighbors.
Correct.
I see. Okay, I just, yeah. Okay. I guess I'm, I'm good with how it's written, but we can talk about screening. I, I'm, I don't know, not sure what that means.
And I, I guess on that note as well, Councilmember Van Aston, related to other communities around this area, there are no screening requirements specifically written out in the zoning ordinances for residential properties. Basically, just the limitation of where it can be parked and what surface it can be on, and what number.
We have to get back into the fence ordinance, and I don't think they want it.
I don't do it yet. Sounds like fun.
Yeah, it's, I don't know. Anybody else?
So the plan, but the planning commission unanimously voted no.
Yes, in January, they provided feedback to staff to, and directed us to proceed, and then we had brought back an amendment to clarify location and surfacing requirements. And at the end of the discussion, they felt that it was not going to solve the overall visual issue of them being placed on the property in general, so.
Here's my two cents. The half-acre thing is, is taken care of, and it's fine. Personally, I don't care if a guy wants to kill his grass and leave it sit there for 10 years, that's his business. I don't need any kind of a surface underneath it. I can see the point, if you have two, two and a half acres, I don't know, I mean, I could see there being a number there where, you know, is it, is it just junk, or is it your 35-foot fifth wheel that's sitting back there? And is there five of them, or four of them, or three of them? I mean, how many fifth wheels or campers does this guy need?
Well, it's.
Is it a, is it a camper, a car?
It's also a lawnmower.
Whatever.
It's, right.
Well, there's not too many lawnmowers that sit outside, I don't think, but whatever.
My God.
The other, the other area here with, this is just me and Marty, I don't know how we enforce something, we, we got our own junkyard right, right down the road. In your backyard.
Well, it is getting slowly cleaned up. You done it with public works?
Yeah.
Work in progress.
It's been there for a year and a half, and we've been working on it for a year and a half.
Better than it was last year, is it not?
I don't think so.
Oh, it is. I can promise you this.
That was a big deal.
Field thing's gone, or.
I don't think the burn thing is there anymore.
Are you saying you want to put a number on it, or?
I think there should be a.
Do you have, you want a number on yours?
One wing, huh? I'm an egg.
Oh, I see.
Egg is in here too.
Yeah, but it has no limits, even less, so.
I got three bull barns too, by the way.
So nothing should be outside.
Oh, yeah, there can be a limit on it. I mean, or, this is another issue that we're going to have to deal with at some point. Maybe your grandfather, what's there? I mean, moving forward, at some point, at some point, we're going to have to address this thing. Otherwise, we're going to have 10 junkyards.
But they don't have the acreage. I mean, that's part of the thing, right? Like.
Yeah, we're talking about, are you talking about small lots or large lots?
Well, it's those, it's the two, like, it's the two, two and a half, three, that's where like, like in, they can hail, right? Like, those, those, that's.
Those are all 10. 10 or 15, those are big lots.
I, I thought there were some smaller ones than that. Maybe I'm thinking about that other. But anyway, what, if we're doing this A3, right, the A3 district, and we're talking about these like, small, large lots, or large, small lots, or we want to think, like, one and a half, two, three acre lots, you have a bunch of them. That's where like, you're kind of, yes, you have more land than in a residential, but you are still kind of more on top of, you know, like, they're more on top of each other than we are on top of.
Right.
Like, so yeah, you can have, like, yes, we're neighbors, but I can't see anything. There's giant tree line between us, right? Because there's screening. I have a giant tree line between me and my next neighbor, so no one required that, it's just part of being out there. So for me, it's that, it's not just, it's the, it's those, like, less than five acres. I, I don't think it's just half acre, then do whatever the heck you want. I think there is some medium between like a half acre and five acre where I think we do need to put some sort of limit on it. And then beyond five acres, fine, then at that point, you should probably have enough that you can, you know, do what you want, not do what you want. But, but I do, I don't think half is like the cutoff for, at that point, we don't care anymore. I think there needs to be a middle ground, a medium sign.
The other thing is, are we going to do anything about it? I mean.
No. Doesn't mean we should have rules.
There was a comment made, and I'm just, I'm just interested, there was a comment made that, well, it's, it's unenforceable. That part is, I don't know if you can go after a person that had, that's had something sitting there. I mean, we tried to do this years ago. One man's junk is another man's treasure, and that's the way they order it in court. If somebody's grandfathered in, I don't know if you can.
How would your grandfather amend? Are we going to keep a record at everybody's house, and how many?
Go online right now and look to see who's got what, using Google Maps.
Mayor, members of the council, we try, we try to use historical photos. That's what we try to use, the stereos.
But are you going to see that they had a trail this day, a trailer sitting there this day?
John, John can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that this section of the ordinance falls under the legal non-conforming status that is otherwise provided. I don't believe that that is the case in this regard, so whatever it changes to, everybody would have to adhere to that.
Yeah. Yeah. And hard to enforce is not the same as can't enforce, right? Like, the police cannot pull over every single person who speeds. That doesn't mean we say, "You know what, then there's no speed limit. Go whatever speed you want because we can't catch everybody."
That's true.
That's not how we go about things. Like, you go, and then you go after the ones who are the worst. You go like, if you got someone going five over and someone going 15 over, you pull the person going 15 over, like, that's your priority because they're pretty much, like, so one person's got three boats, and you're like, "Do you really need three boats?" That's my bedtime, by the way, everybody. So, but like.
My question would be is, why do you tell me how many boats I can have?
Well, at a certain point, you're running a business. I mean, I mean, like, or, like, you, well, the question becomes, are you running a business? Like, do you have, do you honestly have 30 boats, like?
30?
Yeah.
Well, we can set the number at some reasonable number, but I don't think two or three is reasonable.
No, I'm not saying, like, that's where, like, there is, there is a line, I think, but I think there is a line.
Sure, we can.
To serve what purpose? Are you what, why? You know, I understand that, you know, when people have junk piled all over the, around their house, in front of their house, and, you know, inoperable vehicles and all that stuff, that's a, you know, that, that affects the entire neighborhood.
Yeah.
But if I've got three boats sitting in my backyard, why does anybody else care?
I don't. So how do we distinguish, where does that line between you are an eyesore and you're bringing down property values to, "I don't care what you have in your backyard"? What is that line?
You know, it's kind of weird because when I see these large lots with boats or something like that, I don't look at it as a, as a bringing my property values down. I look at it as a, as a neighborhood that, where people enjoy life.
I mean, and it depends, it depends on exactly.
So who's an eyesore, or what's an eyesore, I guess, is really. The eye of the person looking at it.
The eye of the beholder.
Huh?
It's in the eye of the beholder.
I was going to say that, but that seemed kind of.
Too many eyes in there.
Yeah.
Do we, do we agree that there is a certain point where a property can have too much stuff in the front and side yards?
I get, especially for large lots, I get, and this is, this says you can't put any in the front yard, right?
If you do put it in the front yard, it's got to be a part of the driveway or on If you do put it in the front yard, it's got to be a part of the driveway or on a-
Yeah, like, the, the, yeah.
Which is fine.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I have no harm with that.
Move it in the back.
Yeah.
And I think you get one on the side, even for large lots, but for the most part, the expectation is it goes in the back.
Yeah.
If you would, if, if that's the direction that you want to proceed with, if the side yard wants to, if, so, right now, the way the ordinance was drafted, the side yard limitation is only for those properties under a half acre. That limits it to one. If you'd like to extend that to the larger lots, and then let them do as they do in the rear yard, certainly, we would take that direction.
So I thought the large lots only had one on the side, but you're saying it didn't?
I don't have the ordinance in front of me.
Mayor Conflit does have one.
Yeah, one.
It does say that.
Yep. Says one on the side yard, but in the back is-
Not giving myself the benefit of the doubt.
One on the side yard and unlimited in the rear.
And the half acres can have one on the side or one in the back?
It would be, and if they, provided they could meet that setback.
Reversion, because she'll be part of the rear. Oh, so you can have one in the back, one in the side.
Yeah. In my guess, you know, there's a lot of those, those small lots that they've, they're fully fenced in for them to get something back there is probably not a habit.
And going back to the set, the side yard setback limitation, had, a lot of these R3 lots are seven and a half feet, which they wouldn't be able to do so. It's more of a, you've got a wide enough lot, you could do this if you would like to.
That's where I wonder a little bit, strictly on the small lot piece of it, is that there are going to be, I would say, the majority of the lots that don't have the setback, meet the setback requirements if you park a boat or something there. And so they're limited to the backyard, but they can have one. But if they've got that side room, then, then you can have one there and one in the back.
Correct.
It seems more reasonable to me to say you can have two. You know, one, two total.
Sure.
Right? One in the side, one in the back, or two in the back. You can't put one on the side, but you still, it would still be two.
Sure. And then I also note, for these new developments, the majority of them, if that, all of them require an HOA now with these new developments.
They're going to have their own-
Yeah, so, I mean, you can raise the ceiling, but you can't lower the floor, is kind of the same for that, so.
Yeah. Okay. Well, where are we at?
Where are we at?
So for less than a half acre, you can have two, either one on the side, one in the back, or both in the back, to deal with the people who have decide that they can't fit one in there. And then for over a half acre, one on the side and as many as you want in the back. And we don't care what surface it's on.
That's what it currently states, yes.
I'm okay with that.
You'll think we got the three, so you can, you can-
I don't see it, I don't, to me, it doesn't, anything in the backyard doesn't deter value unless you get, you know, unless it gets drastic.
Yeah, it's the, the front yard that makes things a little less palatable, I guess.
Mayor, Mayor, so I'm going to ask one question, because I don't know if this is going to pertain to anything, but in the backyards, do you want them organized? Need an orderly, or is it, does it matter how they put them, does it matter?
We could have a paragraph of ordinance to cover that.
The only reason I ask is because if you say, I don't care how they go back there, and if somebody has 14 boats in their backyard, jammed in there any which way, and these boats, RVs, whatever, and we have a neighbor complaining, and we go, they're in the backyard, nothing we can do about it?
Correct.
You're going to have a resident in here, or multiple, saying, my neighbor's got a junkyard in the backyard, and you're going to say, nothing we can do about it. That's why, that's the only reason I said, is it need an orderly, or is it just wherever?
I don't care, I would need an orderly. What's wrong with need an orderly?
Well, I would do need an orderly, I'm not sure how we define that.
I don't, I don't know either, that's why-
The current ordinance, or the proposed ordinance amendment does say, and I think that this is under city code as well, chief anger related to licensed and operable, meaning they've got to be ready to go, ready to move, and they can go on a street legally.
Licensed operator, yeah, I like keep that, yeah.
And that includes things like tires being flat and whatnot, so.
That's in there.
I think current licensing is an important piece of it.
Yeah, that's a little different.
This is a, I don't know how this even comes into play exactly in this context, but, you know, I get more worried about stuff that's parked on the front. And, you know, some of the situations that have been brought to our attention, there's a home with a driveway facing the street, of course, and then there'll be a pole barn of some kind also facing the street, and then more things parked there in front of it. And we're not really talking about that.
Well, are you talking about, so the pole barn would be kind of-
Adjacent to the house.
Adjacent to the house, and the front would be roughly the same?
And so now you've got things parked here, and you've also got things in your driveway.
Well, that would technically still be the front yard.
And even if they're, I get what you're, what you're saying, too. If they're in a row along that driveway, even though they're on a driveway, there is a group of them in one narrow area out in the front yard. And I don't disagree that this ordinance probably doesn't necessarily address that very specific, other than the fact that it would just require them to be on a parking pad or driveway surface. That's the only clarification that this would provide in that regard.
Do they still need to be licensed?
Yes.
Currently licensed and operable.
Correct.
And owned by the person who has property.
I always wondered, though, if you're, if you're doing repair work, how operable is something for three or four weeks?
I will just declare, I will just clarify as well, when it comes to looking at these items that are on private property, in order to be able to view things that are not viewable from the street, we have to get the property owner's permission to do that. And they could very well say, no, that, that is not something that you can do. So really, we can only report on items we can see from the street. So the nice thing about Minnesota is they require two license plates on the front and back. But on trailers, if they're parked backwards, we really have a hard time finding out whether they're licensed or not without property owner permission.
To go back to Zach's point about 14 boats in the backyard, on a two acre or an acre and a half lot, if you've got 14 boats back there, that's your whole backyard. And that's going to create an eyesore.
Who's going to have 14 boats?
I don't know.
Somebody who's renting a storage. Do you really want another 14-page amendment to cover?
That's where we're going with it. You could easily put a number in there, four, five. That takes care of all of that.
Not mine. I got a flatbed, I got a horse trailer, I got the tractor, I will oftentimes have the snowmobile trailer back there.
Are they, are they need an orderly?
I think so, but that's me. I just, geez, I leave people alone. I don't get it. Don't get it. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
To the point of, it's hard to enforce if you can't see them, but if you can't see them, then they're probably not as big of a deal, right? Like, the ones that we're concerned about are the ones that are the eyesore, that are like a blight on their neighbors. You can probably see those, to, like, you know what I mean? It's like, if the issue is, well, we can't enforce ones we can't see, those aren't the ones that are the issue.
Right. It just gets into that gray area if a trailer's parked backwards and, you know, that type of thing. But just to reiterate, reiterate some of the things that I've heard, less than a half acre, two, whether you have one in the side or one in the back, or two in the back, we can work on language to make that distinction. Allow side yards that are larger than that to have one in the side, and then unlimited in the back. That's, those are the, those are the two items, at least, I've heard from more-
You want unlimited, like, eight? I mean, what's the point of having a limit, then?
So that you don't, my concern is that we can cut down on some of these illicit storage businesses.
Then they'll come in and get a permit.
Which is fine. They should come in and get a permit and pay the, like, pay the fee to have a business. Like, I don't mind that you run a business, but then go through them, follow the rules. It's the illicit businesses that don't want to pay the rules and have these businesses, but like, they just want the profit and none of the consequences or responsibilities of running a business. Because you should also have insurance if you're starting other people's things on your property. So like, that's, that's for me, is that, like-
The business ordinance?
That we check their insurance. Well, but I'm saying, there is a point where, like, 10, like, once you go past 10, I have some serious questions about why you need that many fully operational road-
Sure.
Here we are.
Come up with rules for it.
You know, ultimately, what we're trying to do is get people to clean up their yards, and-
That was the impetus, yes.
I don't know how we're doing that.
I don't either.
Okay. Okay. Do you have a better, do you have a suggestion, then?
On how to clean up your yard? No. But it, I don't know that it's-
Moving stuff out of the front's a big job, I guess.
Well, I think that, you know, that's something we, we're not addressing here, really, but we're, you know, I think that would help in a real way. I think that, personally, I think that if people have stuff in their yards, they ought to screen it, but I don't know that we need to legislate that.
Fair.
Councilmember Fashion, do you, would you be interested in seeing a limitation of recreational vehicles and trailers from being parked in the front yard regardless of the surfacing? And limit that area to motor vehicles and maybe one of such vehicle, or something like that? Is that something that, because this ordinance amendment also clarifies what is a motor vehicle, what's a trailer, and what's a recreational vehicle? So that distinction is there?
I think that would help. I think that if we had a limit on what's in front, I think that, that helps in some of these situations.
And all of that, to like the RVs? Is that what you mean, RV limit, or what, what limit?
Well, yeah, the trailers.
Just unit in general. So what if, I mean, a lot of these, these, especially that under half acre, they-
You're okay with no limit. You're okay, no limit. You're okay, no limit, right? All right, we're there.
Stephanie doesn't count, apparently.
It doesn't matter.
Why are you so quiet?
I'm trying not to incriminate myself.
How many you got, Stephanie?
I got three. And I have 23-something of an acre. But my neighbor next door doesn't care. They're nicely put, I have a boat, an off-road vehicle, and my daughter's car, so that we both can back in and out of the driveway. Otherwise, we can't back in and out of our garage, because I don't have room.
See, and that's, those are the kind of edge cases that we always whack, because we have these blanket things. And just, too much.
I mean, I could definitely move two or one of them to the back, and she'll be, have a, she'll have a license in a month here or what have you, but-
Wouldn't you want rackets in that?
Dennis? No more. You're cut off, no more. No, I guess, I don't, I don't care about the surface.
The limit is trailers and RVs. The vehicle won't count.
But I can't.
Why?
Park it in my side yard, right?
Right.
Vehicles, recreational vehicles, and trailers.
Doesn't count vehicles?
Yeah, it does. Vehicles, recreational vehicles, and trailers.
Why don't you three just make a motion and get this over with?
Well, are we done? Because we're still on the front.
I am, you're, but I would like to be in compliance.
I know.
And so I feel like the only thing this really does is help, like, people like me, who are not following the rules currently.
Or Dennis.
Or Dennis, over here with the 16 vehicles.
But he's over the half acre.
True. You ever pretend I wasn't here today?
What is, what is, the rule is one, right? And it's got to be on a pad.
Four.
For a small, oh, small lot.
I don't believe that there is a limit.
Oh, there's no limit, but it's, but it does have to be on a pad.
Uh, no, the way that it's written, it just has to be on a concrete or bituminous material or surface.
So, yeah, it's got to be on something.
So this would, this would require it to be a driveway or parking pad in the front. And just to clarify, on the vehicles, the motor vehicles are only allowed in the front yard on a driveway or parking pad. There is no, if it doesn't call out what is permitted in certain yards, it's not permitted.
I'm not really worried.
All right, well-
Do you want to just say no to all of this, and leave it at it, or?
No.
Okay.
I don't.
I think that- We are. Well, I think that the existing ordinance is, and may, I'm a little confused now with, with what you said last, because this came up originally when there was a complaint about a residence, resident that had, I think, three boats in the backyard, and it's a, and a smaller lot, and they weren't on an improved service, surface, and I thought it was both of those things that were the problem.
It was not the number.
It was just-
It was just the surface.
But now we're putting a number on it.
Well-
Now you're taking away the surface.
But I think the reason was, because the surface was the only thing that that person could get got, like, the person who complained was unhappy about the vehicles, but there is nothing in the ordinance about locate, like, about anything else. The only thing in the ordinance that the person could complain about was the surface, because I've talked to the person who did the complaint. It's like, I didn't care about the surface, I cared about the vehicles, but I couldn't, there was no mechanism to complain about anything other than the surface. Hence, the complaint was about the surface. But the person doing the complaint didn't actually care about the surface. It was the number of vehicles, and that was like a junkyard next to their house, or in their neighborhood. Which is how we got here. And maybe I did not articulate what he, maybe that was not what the intent was, but that was my takeaway from our conversation.
So, go ahead.
Counsel, I have a question. So, I don't think there's a consensus, but I'm going to try to interpret it.
There is a consensus. It's three to two.
Okay. Is there a consensus to prohibit trailers and boats in the front yard?
Totally?
Totally.
Even on the driveway?
Even on the driveway.
I would think so, because, like I said, a lot of these small lots, they got a fenced backyard, where else is it going to go?
Okay. Would you entertain establishing a limit in that regard? Front yard?
You already have it.
Not currently.
Not on the driveway.
Actually, no, you don't. I like it the way you got it. I mean, the one on the side, one in the backyard, that's good enough.
Well-
If you want to have a boat in the front yard, so be it. You're taking up a parking spot.
Can you clarify, front yard means the driveway, right? We're not talking like-
It includes all the yard space in, at the building line into the front yard.
You draw a line across the front of the building, towards the street, just up there, all the way from Edge Town.
So you could just, I could park my boat in the front corner of my front yard?
No, there's no parking in the front yard.
Not currently. That's what I'm saying, is like, if you allowed parking in the front yard, that would be allowed, right?
No.
Well, if you allowed it in the front yard, it would be.
So just on the driveway?
This, this, this here is-
I'm tired.
The proposed language, vehicles, recreational vehicles and trailers may be parked in the front yard, provided it is parked on an improved surface such as, I'm sorry, that is, this one here. Vehicles, recreational vehicles, trailers shall be permitted in front and side yards on a driveway or parking pad constructed of concrete or bituminous material.
Okay.
And it's only there was consensus to have on the second two bullet points there, the side yard or the rear, doesn't matter which one, you can have a max of two, period. That's what the consensus was that I heard from the council, related to, doesn't matter if one on the side, one in the back, two in the back, doesn't matter. Just, you can only have two total.
And then greater than a half acre, you limit the side yard to one, which is already in-
Yes. And the only thing different than the more than a half acre is the, the one on the side yard and then there's, in the back, there is no limit.
And Sarah, you're saying you would like a limit in the back, or no? I'm just sorry, I'm- I can get, I, I would get behind a limit, but it's not a deal breaker for me. Like, if someone else was like, I think we should have a limit, I would support that position, but I also am okay without the limit.
So, I think, I guess the surprise for me was, I was in the impression that we did have on the small lots a limit, and you're saying we didn't.
No, this is the only language that addresses parking areas and, and driveways.
How about if you change the, the size of a lot? If you have a limit on anything over a half to three acres, there's a limit of five, or four. Give me a number. Anything over three acres, do what you want.
What are you on, Dennis?
I don't know why we care. Said it.
I'm just trying to-
I just see another paragraph of ordinance.
If you guys don't want to make a motion to approve it, I mean, you already got approval, so.
Well, I think we're running into some other issues. Like I said, we're adding a limit to the small lots.
We are, and I didn't realize that we-
I didn't either.
Realized that we were.
Are you trying to fit Stephanie into this deal?
Well, it's not just her.
I get that. So deny the whole thing, just get it over with.
Well, I, I would at least like to get rid of the pervious surface thing, the bituminous and the-
For the, yeah, that's what we're doing here on this.
In, in one chunk of it, yeah. I, maybe, I mean, do we do that and then table the rest, or, I don't know?
You know, table it, you just add that, add that deal in there and change that and do it. Otherwise, you got nothing.
Well, to that end, I think the plan commission was right. We're not, we're not fixing the actual concern.
I don't roll the lilacs around the whole thing.
The pervious surface thing, I think is a no brainer, but-
I think that's an unnecessary requirement.
Yeah.
I think the nuisance storage of stuff on people's property, we're not really fixing.
Okay. Do we just, pull the, the, oh.
Where do you want me to go?
Back up to the, to the discussion on what the new requirements are. Yeah, so, basically, we would strike the second or the third and fourth bullets down? And just at least get the whole concrete bituminous material out of there? I'd be fine with that, for a step.
I think, yeah, I think that would be a useful change to this. I, I, I don't think there's a formula that really does much for us in terms of limiting numbers on any of these yards. People shouldn't store junk in their yard, and I don't know how we address that.
But just because you say that, that's not going to stop it.
Well, what would stop it? Well, what, what's stopping it?
A number.
Really? You, you think setting a number, that is, is, what number do you want to set then for what size of property?
Three acres and down, go five. I mean, is five not enough?
I don't know.
That's a lot.
It's, it's a lot.
That's a lot of units on a, under three acre lot. That means you got five in the backyard and one on the, one on the side. Plus your two cars or whatever cars you got. You got seven or eight vehicles. Or, or units, not vehicles.
Well, I'd add a minimum, want to get rid of the, that you gotta put it on a pad.
So from the actual amendment, from the actual code, that's subsection two, design, construction, and maintenance, surface and drainage, because that's not actually one of the changes we're voting on. That wasn't one of the proposals, proposed changes, had nothing to do with taking that off, right? I'm looking at what you gave to us to vote on, right? The draft ordinance? And the new, because there's the strike through language in the underline. The underline is new. I do like the definition of a motor vehicle and a trailer. Like, having a definition there is helpful. I like adding that. And the actual motion, amendment or thing didn't, didn't change anything about off-street parking being on the various surfaces. Like, that didn't change. So, it, because it's still there, so.
It did change in the way that the, the standard language right now is that all parking areas regardless of locations have to be on a concrete or bituminous material.
Okay.
Where this makes a distinction that if it's in the front yard, it's gotta be on a hard surface.
Okay.
And there can be language in there, Mayor Fisher added to say, or another material approved by city staff, and that may be a paver driveway to, to provide that clarification. That can certainly be put in there. But it does create that separation of what can be parked where and on what. And there's always the option to, for me to gather my notes and bring this back to you in March. Which I'm, I'd certainly be willing to do if.
I think at least at this point, we can, it seems like everybody's in agreement that the material can be removed. Where you park it or what you park it on doesn't matter.
In the front yard, including?
Are you trying to get a five old thing here?
No.
Oh, okay.
You're just saying to remove it from the backyard?
Yeah.
And side?
And the side.
We can certainly, yeah, we could certainly do that. You mean, you mean just pare it down, the ordinance amendment, pare it down to only address that at this point?
Yes. That's what I'm thinking, because here we are. And we're, how many minutes into this thing? Around, around, I think.
Forty-five. Nobody's got it.
What do you guess?
I, I think you're gonna get pushback on that, so if you-
From who?
Anyone that's buying a $700,000 house and then has a parking lot next to it on the grass.
So the current complaint would still remain. We're just making it so that they can have the three plus trailers in the backyard. So there now is just nothing to complain about.
Okay.
Right?
Are you suggesting that? Two, or do you want a concrete pad? Because I do not want a concrete pad. I think that's silly.
I think we should table this and think about what our goals are and how we accomplish those goals. I think we're all too tired and no one's making good choices right now.
That's a good idea. We'll table it so we can have another 45 minute discussion later.
Well, hopefully not after, like, five hours of other discussions.
So I'll make a motion that we amend the language regarding what kind of surface you're parking your licensed vehicles on. Scratch the rest because we need a lot more discussion on it. I don't want this to be over on this, but we're not gonna solve it tonight.
So you're tabling it, then?
Nope.
I made a motion to amend the language around the-
Just the surface.
Just the surface.
Inside and rear yards specifically is what you're referring to. Sure.
To not require a surface or to require-
Essentially, yes.
To not require a special surface.
So can you go back to the first slide, dig right there? So essentially, what you're striking is the yellow part?
Yes.
Yes.
So that they could park it on the grass wherever they'd like to.
I think that staff, at least from my point of view, we would at least want to make the recommendation that we do provide that distinction between a front yard and then the side and the rear.
Yes.
So that language will still, to a certain extent, it will be in there.
Yep.
We could certainly work on that and send you a revised ordinance based on that in the weekly update or whatever it may be to show you what the language came out to be, so.
That's the motion.
Yeah.
Second? I will second.
Any more discussion?
I'm gonna vote no because I just want to table it and do the whole thing right. Sorry. I might be the only no, but that's okay. I'm happy to be that person.
Okay, we got a motion ready. Second, me. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those against, say no.
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 All right. Fail.
I should have more to you.
All right. On item O.
Oh, here's another phone. I'm gonna make a motion, we just scratched this whole thing.
To deny the amendment.
Yes.
And stick, well, the current one says that nothing can be in the right of way.
Sorry, we're on the next one. We're on that.
That's the current law.
That's the current law.
We talked about this. I don't know what happened.
We did talk, but-
All right, I'll go back to my deal that I made, I don't know, six months ago.
Do you want, is there need to be another motion on the floor for that item and, or was he gonna say?
I make a motion to table it and bring it back at the next meeting. Or does the-
We can, we can schedule it for another-
Okay, it failed, it just failed. It failed for like a majority.
Yeah.
But from a staff direction, I think there's more work to be done there.
That's why I'm trying to figure out what-
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
But I think in my direct, my personal direction would be like, we know that there is an issue. How do we solve the issue without making, first off, in a way that can actually be enforced, but also isn't going to punish, like, and maybe there isn't an answer, but like, let's look at what other cities, I know we've looked at a few cities, but like, maybe that's, maybe that's the answer. Call the League of Minnesota Cities, other places have had to deal with this, so.
Ten cities are gonna have ten different ones?
Possibly, but maybe we can find one we like and we can copy and paste.
All right, hit a mo.
On this next deal, we talked about this for sure six months ago, and I suggested that we have one sign in each direction, north, south, east, west, meaning they can have two signs on any intersection. If we scratch the whole deal and leave it as no signs in the right of way, we're going back to the same argument that, same discussion.
That's what we have today.
Yeah.
The ordinance is no signs in the right of way.
That's what, that's what, so if we do nothing, that's what we have?
We just chose not to enforce it.
Yeah, that was totally right.
I'm fine with that if that's what we do.
We chose to stop enforcing it.
Yep.
And actually, the Planning Commission recommended that that prohibition of signs in the right of way be stricken from the ordinance altogether, so there isn't a, there isn't specific language that calls it out.
Okay. I'm just trying to avoid the whole heritage signs are okay, city signs are no, whatever. Because we went down, we went around and around with that thing. If we're gonna not enforce it, I'm fine. Leave it the way it is.
One of the questions, one of the questions that came up was about liability. If there were a car accident that someone could argue is because of all the signs in the right of way and they couldn't see, is the city liable?
No. No way. Because then you'd have, any accident, every city would be liable for that accident in some way.
It was a question that came up at Planning Commission, and there wasn't a response, there wasn't an answer in the moment that I heard.
That was if the kid jumped out from the sign and got run over.
I defer to Leo, counsel.
Mayor members of the council, no.
This is why you're here tonight, to answer this question.
Well, at least I'm earning my keep tonight. Mayor members of the council, no. The, the, this issue of, of having an ordinance that bans signs placed in the right of way, but then not enforcing it is, is kind of a separate question from liability. It doesn't create a liability. I mean, it kind of is, kind of a poor practice to have an ordinance on the books and act, and choose specifically to not enforce it. And that also, you know, opens up the possibility of future arguments of selective enforcement. That way, if you ever did try to enforce it, then that person would say, well, you know, you've not been enforcing this since six months ago whenever the council decided to, to not do that. You know, I mean, so there are other issues, but specifically liability in, in a car accident or for other injuries because of an impeded view is, is, is not, is not something that would result from leaving the ordinance as is.
Okay, thank you. But Planning Commission said just to strike the language so that it was open.
Not specifically called out, correct?
Okay. Would that leave us free then if a particular business was being an utter nuisance to then remove nuisance signs? Is there a language in there about nuisance signs, like?
What's an example of a nuisance sign?
If you take one, you gotta take them all.
You can separate commercial from non-commercial. Commercial is not protected by the same rights as non-commercial. You cannot favor commercial over non-commercial. That's what the rule says. You can't favor commercial. It doesn't say you can't favor non-commercial over commercial.
Well, there, there are cases where ordinances have been held invalid, let me make sure I'm gonna say this right, it is late in the evening, where ordinances have been, have not been invalidated because they treated the commercial and non-commercial the same. But, you know, and this is, this kind of gets to what was in the memo that, that I provided with all the footnotes. I always give you all lots of footnotes with case citations. You know, so when it, you just, it, sign ordinances have to be enforced in terms of time, place, and manner. So, and then the distinction between whether they, whether a regulation is content-based or not, or content-neutral, it all comes down to the level of scrutiny. So, you know, it, when the commercial versus non-commercial, it's just a difference in the, the level of, of scrutiny that the, that the, that a court would apply to it. So usually, it's easier to just have a ban on signs in the right of way because that's, that's the place, and it doesn't matter who it is, what it says, how big it is, how small it is. It just can't be there. So that is a, is a, you know, from an enforceability standpoint, much clearer.
And then they put them up Friday anyways. I don't know, is there?
So are we proposing to accept the change language where they strike out any sign within the public right of way is removed and then?
That was it, right?
Yes, that-
Basically removed.
It's stricken that from the prohibited sign section of the ordinance, not specifically calling that out. And then there was language related to off-premise signs where if someone wanted to get a temporary sign or a sign that doesn't require a permit based on what is orderly, and they obtain permission from the property owner, they can do that. So it gives that flexibility for seasonal businesses to maybe contact that property on the corner of a street or something like that, to work with them to place a sign.
And they also upped the, the, the height for the monument signs, I believe, to 16 feet from eight feet.
Yeah, and that was discussed both at the Planning Commission and City Council level with the QuickTrip sign.
Yeah.
And they have since provided an application that reflects this change, so on their good graces and on your good graces, they agreed to make that change from a pylon sign.
I make a motion to approve the updated sign ordinance with the change as written. Do I need to say them all, or just?
Just as, yeah.
As.
As recommended by the Planning Commission?
Thank you, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
I'll second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. All right, on to item P.
I'm gonna make a motion, we table this and come back and do it another day.
Go ahead, then. Sorry.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Dennis gets to say it.
Dennis, I'm leading you into this.
Okay. We got a motion, a second. We need discussion? Oh, wait, tabling, I don't think you-
Tabling, yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right? It's tabled. And with that, if there's no objections, we'll be adjourned. We're adjourned.